Thank you, Mr. Seiber.
Here.
Mr. Seymour.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Lance, is it you this evening? Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Pachacu.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
You have six members present.
All right, thank you.
One item counts, one item. Item number four, to exchange with item number three. We'll have to see if we can get that together. The first item on our agenda is the downward sign of power proposed until...
The first item was a referral back from the city council at the Red Army meeting on March seventeen. There was two areas, uh, two concerns that were raised during the, um, public discussion. One was a concern that the residents had from Evergreen Meadows condominiums. And also there was some, um, questions about the building design and the scale. Tonight, um, Mr. Matt Wallerstein is, um, here to, uh, talk about his discussion with the condominium association. And Mr. Mark Drain, his architect, is here to talk about the perspectives that have been, um, presented in any other site plan issues that the council may have. This is, again, a referral as a study session tonight to be brought back to council on April coming in. With that, I'm gonna invite the developer, applicant, to come up and address, um, the changes that were made since the last meeting and to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, would you give your name and business address for the record?
Certainly. Uh, my name is Matthew Wallerstein, I'm at Equities Inc., business address is fifty five Fifth Avenue, fifteen four, New York North, one triple zero three. My architects name goes now to me, sure.
Good evening, I'm Mark Drain, I'm with Rockaway Architects, my address is three two five zero zero Telegraph Road three two fifty, David Farms, Michigan.
Okay, we'll turn it over to you this time and ask if we can ask any questions.
Yeah, sure. Um, thanks for the opportunity to be here again, so, so do this. Um, so, after our last meeting, we, we heard it loud and clear, um, with regard to the concerns raised by the residents for Evergreen Meadows. I spoke with, um, I spoke with Tina, who's the board president, um, was with, uh, Mark's, um, immediately after the meeting, um, the length with, uh, with, with Mark. And, um, and then we then attended their, um, their regular board meeting and their board manager's meeting, which I believe was two weeks ago tomorrow. So, um, something around two weeks ago, I don't know if it was a Tuesday. Um, and, uh, we, we first, yeah, first and foremost, what I heard at that meeting was a concern that was left, you know, that, that, that had been, that had nothing to do with the new retail development. That they felt like there was a, there was a longstanding feeling that, that the owner of the office properties was not necessarily very, you know, was not a good neighbor. Um, due to various operational practices, I think it needed, you know, it had that also needed to forget that you're directly adjacent to residential development. So, they, you know, there were complaints they'd had for a number of years, it sounded like our, our predecessor wasn't receptive to those, except to the extent that they agreed to install a new fence along the property line. So, that's what I heard first and foremost, and I, I told them at the meeting was, you know, my, my, my first goal here is to put ourselves in position to be good neighbors with you guys. And then, you know, if I can, if I can convince you of that, then we can take the step of trying to talk, you know, talk to you about this proposed retail development. So, we spent the good bulk of the meeting just talking about how the two properties interact, and they gave me a good sense. And I had gone over there after, the day after the city, the last city council meeting, I went over there, um, just to get a sense of what it looked like from their side of the fence and really get a, and it really kinda drives home how, you know, immediately adjacent they are. And there's the folks that are in the, that have a backyard that faces a building, you know, chairs right in the face, it's not a very generous separation, you know, say the least. So, you know, I get it, I'm totally sympathetic to that, but I think their complaint had less to do with the actual physical barrier and more to do with just the fact that, you know, every, you know, everyone wants a lot of cleaners who are using a compactor late at night. So, we've already put measures in place to make sure that some of these noise and nuisance issues don't persist, you know, it's easy stuff. We just tell those cleaners, look, ten o'clock, that's your drop dead, if you haven't, you know, if you need to use the compactor, then you have to wait till the morning. Um, same issue with trash removal, we work with our rubbish removal manager to adjust their hours. Um, exercising the generator, we're only gonna do that on Saturdays now, I guess in the past some had been done on Sundays, though I don't recall when that might have been the way, we're not gonna do it on Sunday anymore. So, I think it's just a matter of, you know, also establishing open lines of communication, you know, I brought my property manager to the meeting, Karen Glitch, who works on site full-time. And now they have her contact information, they have our assistant property manager's contact information, they have my contact information. So, I think we have a good foundation to be good neighbors with that moving forward, and I think that was the, the most important thing. Because I think they just had a sense that this stuff has all just happened to them, and did it, did, um, you know, really shame on me for not having been more proactive in that regard beforehand, but I'm glad I did it now, because they're, they're terrific people and really reasonable. And as soon as we talked everything out and, you know, we were able to come to a very minimal, you know, mutually minimal understanding on that count. Um, we also talked about the proposed retail development, I showed, you know, kinda Markell, you know, the sense of the, the dimensions. I think they, they thought that the, the building was gonna really just be right up next to their property, whereas it's not. And, you know, as Mark pointed out, the, the last city council hearing, the distance was in... Oh, yeah, yeah, perfect. So, this, this, this distance right here from the, from the, the southeasterly building on their development to ours is, is right around two hundred feet. Um, so, that helped, you know, assuage their concerns, I talked to them about the uses that we were considering for the building, and that we were just as concerned about any, you know, I don't know, well, that was the wrong word, like any, any purient uses or anything that would be a nuisance to the neighborhood. That we were focused on adding amenities to the neighborhood and that, that was, that's to, you know, to increase their property values, not decrease it, as they had, you know, voiced that concern. And I think overall, I'm like, I'm receptive to those concerns, because these people, a lot of them bought those homes before, a lot of this was, was, you know, underdeveloped or being discussed. Um, so, I'm sure there is a sense that this is happening to them, but, you know, it's not my job to convince them that the overall objectives of the re, of, um, of, uh, you know, the, the right away improvements and all that are, are, are just. It's more to convince them that we intend to do the right thing here and, and doing our part to, to, you know, improve upon on the amenity base of the neighborhood and make it more pedestrian oriented. And I think, I, I think we were successful in that regard, I got, regarding, I get good positive feedback from them after the meeting, we followed up last week with, you know, I followed up with an email just explaining, just to reiterate and set in stone where our, the changes in our operation are gonna be to, you know, to address their, you know, kinda ongoing concerns, their historical concerns. And then I also sent them a landscaping plan, which you see here, this is in addition to the landscaping that we're proposing for the new development, which is shown here, these kinda piece sign shaped symbols, and sends further stuff. But in addition to this landscaping inside of this rectangle, we're proposing to supplement the existing landscaping that is, that is installed on both sides of the fence on a lot line with a row of spruce trees on our side of the fence, which are, you know, tall, narrow, relatively narrow fir trees that, you know, will provide a visual and a sound barrier year round, as opposed to existing trees which are deciduous. And, um, those trees grow, there's three different types of spruce trees we're proposing they grow. Um, the smaller ones grow in about twenty-five to thirty feet, the taller ones can be as tall as forty feet. So, you know, obviously they're, they're only about ten feet when they're saplings, so there's the immediate, you know, impact is not gonna be tremendous. But, over time, these, these trees are immature, they're gonna create a nice, you know, very visually appealing barrier. And they agree that this is far better than a wall, um, which would be attractive and, and if anything, I think it would detract from their property value. Um, you just don't wanna see those types of things separating, you know, them from us, and I, I would, I think they agree. So, I think this is a good solution, it's certainly an expense on our behalf, we're willing to do it. Um, you know, to, really more just for our, our neighborly relations, um, you know, moving forward, we need to get along with those folks and that's really nothing to do with the retail development, but, um, you know, it can obviously be done. So, I think we addressed both those issues successfully, um, and we feel good about, you know, the initiative to speak to them regardless of this, this, you know, site plan, um, application.
Uh, council, um, can Moss?
Yeah, the residents notified about this, this meeting tonight, and I don't, I don't think any of them are here.
Well, we discussed it at the public hearing that we were coming back tonight.
Okay, so I, I, you know, if there's no one, you know, from this development here to subject, to do it, I'm, I'm comfortable with this moving forward. I'm glad you met, I'm glad that the result is favorable, I'm glad that, uh, it seems like everything's been worked out. Um, and that Evergreen Meadows can kinda live harmoniously with this new development.
Um, I thought we had talked about moving the patio on the north end to the south end.
We have a drive-through on the south end. I mean, I did, I did mention to the, to the, I mean, I'm, I'm, again, recognizing concerns about noise, I think the answer with regard to the outdoor patio is to just restrict hours and put in, you know, we can pull a lot of levers through our building rules and regulations. We can restrict delivery hours, we can restrict, you know, outdoor seating hours, we can restrict noise outside the building, obviously, you know, prohibiting, you know, speakers from playing music except during certain hours of the day. So, I think that can be addressed, you know, that way. Um, and the, the drive-through is best suited on the south side of the building, um, as opposed to the north, so that's, that's why we elected it.
So, where does somebody place an order?
I'm sorry?
Where does somebody place an order?
Here's the drive-through window.
So, where does the stacking and the car go?
It's shown right here, each rectangle represents a stack.
Oh, probably come in there and wrap around.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear that we're not contemplating, and I think I may, I think I said this at the city council, I mean, we're not, the, the, the drive-through use would be ancillary, it would be like an ancillary accessory use to, to the tenant that we have in mind. This isn't like Taco Bell or anything where you're gonna see crowds, that wouldn't work for us, we wouldn't want that for our own property, it would, it wouldn't be feasible, it's not the look we're going for. This is a, we have this in mind for a particular tenant with whom we're negotiating a lease, and the drive-through's aspect is, is part of their requirement, however, it's not the primary, that's not driving their business. They, they obviously aren't gonna, these spaces, it's a building without it, but I don't believe you'd ever see the kinda line that perhaps you're concerned about. I mean, this line can get fairly deep here, as you can see, without creating a problem. Um, and I, I would just be shocked if it ever got to that point, you know, a user is like, it's like, you know, health food products and smoothies and stuff like that.
Mr. Drain, a little better.
I, I like, uh, um, I just wanted something different, and, and I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, um, an obstacle, um, I, I wanna tell you I appreciate you went back and, um, it's not just that flat look outside anymore, you put, uh, decorative, um, I guess you call it a sunscreen, or didn't?
This is always what he had, just to be clear, this is always what Mark had in mind, we just, you know, my, my mistake for not having him render this for the last go around, because I, I understand, it's difficult to look at these plans and these elevations and really see, you can't see color, you can't see light. So, you know, we should've, we should've done this from the beginning, but this is always, this is what we had in mind, the only thing that was changed really on the design was adding this, you know, this height on this side, right?
A height, and we added the, the stone pile asterisk on the corners, a banner, of course, the signage now shows up.
Right, that aside from those embellishments.
The, the sun shade is more articulated, it was maybe a picture worth a thousand words, but you certainly couldn't see this design we all just presented to you, and I apologize for that. Um, I did wanna emphasize the fact that, uh, these corner elements are, are almost twenty-eight feet tall, they are beside the two-story buildings. And by what we've done with the different, breaking up the different materials, we've given it a nice tall looking mask to, to the building. And again, lots of glass at the street front, ability to have these seating at the, uh, on the sidewalk, at the, at the storefront. And, um, we had mentioned the other day about Park Place, and we were the architects for Park Place, and we specifically chose that design.
Didn't tell me that when I talked.
I know, I, I thought we were talking about mid-century design.
Yeah, there are.
And that, that design was selected because it was how, how it integrated with the residential development. This design was selected, it kinda integrates with the overall, how many square feet, one million square feet?
Eight hundred and forty-five.
Eight hundred and forty-five square foot office going by, and the color, the texture, types of materials. So, we think, as architects, we really do feel like this is really, you know, really harmonious with the site.
The sunscreen, is, is that, uh, it's just bars, there's, there's no plexiglass above it?
No, they're all aluminum, it's open, it's open, so it raises, it comes through, but it, it does the shield for, like, for sun. And it gives, it gives you a sense of, of closure when you're walking underneath it, so your building doesn't seem to, it's all white.
It's a nice visual of that too, I'm building, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, it catches it up. Let me ask you about the, um, I like the umbrellas out front, that suggests a place to sit and, um, you know, either talk or eat if, um, the tenant is, if they do just, uh, stuff amongst that, the tenant makes. But, is that gonna go, um, are they gonna go regardless of, um, who, who's in the building?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, so both of those, those islands are, are for sure?
Yeah, all this, all this outdoor, all these outdoor seating areas shown, right here, yeah, here and here and here, these are all meant to be, you know, just out.
As you know, we're trying to have a walkable, uh, place where people would gather, so, you know, I appreciate that, that that, that element, um, is, uh, part of the plan regardless of who your tenants are.
Yeah, I, so I mentioned that, that tenant survey we did, right when we bought the property back, right, last summer, and one of the things we asked, you know, we were asking about all amenities, not just, you know, retail amenities and one of the, we have a courtyard at the property, where there's some tables set up and everything, chairs. And it's right between the two towers, and one of the comments we got is, it gets too windy in there, it's like a wind tunnel effect, and, you know, it can get pretty shady, 'cause it kinda sits right in, you know, spacing between the two towers. So, you know, regardless of the proposed retail development, I've been looking at good spots to establish more outdoor seating in general, 'cause it's something our tenants are asking for, so this is a beautiful opportunity to establish that. You know, let people kinda take a little bit of a stroll away from the building if they need to, and we're gonna try and supplement that with some additional like tables and chairs and around the building. Like, we wanna create like a more open workspace collaborative environment where people feel like they don't just have to be inside their offices, 'cause that's, that's the way everything is headed right now, and that's what we feel like we need to do to be competitive as a, as a workplace, as a multi-tier workplace.
All right, good point, thank you.
Councilman, uh, okay. I think this is a great improvement over what came before us. Um, we discussed, um, at the site plan committee meeting about the stacking up of the parking, as you recall, uh, for the drive-through.
Mm-hmm.
And since then, we discussed it again, I, I know at another meeting. Uh, but I don't think we have to add it, and, uh, and I don't see an objection to it, only because, you look at the plan, you've got, uh, two, four, six, seven, there's seven cars that, you know what, no, go to the south end of the building, south end of the building.
Yeah.
You've got buffer, you've got landscaping, and you've got cars, you won't see, if you're on Evergreen Road, you're willing to see the stacking of cars really, because if you're parking there in the same house, there's people waiting there, you could get, not before, more people waiting to get to the drive-through. It, it, whether you're parking or you extend further than your building, so it's really a buffer of parking and landscaping. And then you have this, uh, uh, you know, this treatment in front, which also disguises seeing the drive-through. I don't see it as objectionable as if it was a straight, flat, uh, Taco Bell type of, of, of a, of a drive-through. And, and I think that was, this is a great improvement on that, I think the landscaping is an improvement that you're putting in. Um, I just, um, sorry, I'm for it, I just want to say this to council, is that we have to decide if we're going to do anything in, I'll call it my place, Central Park Boulevard, uh, that area. Because the more of these types of uses that are on Evergreen Road makes you almost committed to a development on Evergreen as opposed to Central Park Boulevard. And, 'cause you're only gonna have so many, so many, uh, businesses that are gonna be placed in this area, and if you look at it, what we did to stout about it for that developer, uh, we're gonna have another series of, of strip centers as well. So, you add those all up, and, and having been in the restaurant business in this area, you know, you'd have to have, at least my type of a restaurant, which is full service, you have to have a big lunch hour. And, and if you don't have a lunch hour, you're dead. And if they expect to have a, a, a nice restaurant, cloth type restaurant in, in my place, I'll call it my place, uh, or downtown city center, we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions on really where we're going with that. Because we have a city center group meeting and talking about the laws and commercial over there, and yet we keep extending commercial on Evergreen Road. And so, the decision's gonna have to really be made whether Evergreen Road is gonna be the downtown street. And that might not be all bad, but, but if it is, you know, um, you might as well make that decision, because you can't just have this many commercial types to take away from any other businesses. And the other thing is that we're really not keying in on the needs of these individuals that are in the office building as far as other services that they might, you know, hallmark, uh, someplace where they can, can buy something, uh, rent out or something and go get it without going to a shopping center or going outside the city. And then we, we have to start finding out what we are, where we're going with this, because, uh, like I said, it's not their fault, it's, it's a great development. But I think the city has to make a decision, look at the master plan of this area and see that's where we're going with it, because we really, whether we know it or not, we are going in a direction which I don't think is the same as the city center direction it was going to be. And, um, and I throw that up, and I look for another meeting, council and mayor to, to take another look see at, at city center, and see what we are, what we're gonna be, and where we're gonna put things. And, and try to protect whatever we're trying to bring into that area of Central Park Boulevard across the street. And so, I'm just waving a little flag here, uh, to, uh, to say that, you know, I think the going and everything is great, this thing proposed, I'm glad they're coming here, I'm glad they're doing what they're doing, but we have to decide if that's the direction we're going.
Council, meanwhile.
You know, I don't mind having coffee shops, little, little places that we have there now on, on Evergreen Road, because, um, they attract a broader area of people. But, what I really am concerned about is the drive-through, because we wanted to make this a walkable place, I know you need to have a facility for people to be in there. But, I'm concerned that we're going to have too many drive-throughs, we've got one, some of us objected to that, one plan, some of us objected to that. We've got a couple for Ten Mile already, um, at least one, uh, Tim Horton, and, um, maybe a couple more, I think. So, it takes away from bringing people into the city center. Um, you say coffee shop, and you're talking about that tenant, does that tenant want a drive-through?
The tenant on the south, the tenant we're negotiating lease with on the south side of the building for about two thousand square feet wants that, wants a drive-through, it's not a coffee shop.
A tenant inside the building?
No, 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 it's, the prospective tenant for this space on the south side of the proposed building is who requires the drive-through.
Really?
Yeah.
And you can't tell us what, what kind of, um...
Yeah, it's, it's like they do like health foods, like smoothies and like yogurt and things like that. Um, so I think they're primarily gonna cater to a breakfast and lunch crowd, this particular tenant, not all the tenants, but just this one, for, again, for two thousand feet. Um, and so I think their primary, if the drive-through use is primarily gonna be for breakfast, maybe a little bit at lunch. Um, I honestly don't, I don't, I can't like rattle off their full product offering, but I think this is about as benign a drive-through use as you can get. I mean, obviously, it, it, it's of some substance, because they wouldn't be asking for it if it wasn't, but, you know, I, I am appreciative of your concern, and I, I am not trying to diminish it in any way, but I think unfortunately, you know, with having an ear to the leasing activity, I can tell you that this is still, you know, this is still a suburban location. And retailers like that, you know, of the quick to medium service variety are still gonna wanna press every lever they can to drive faster. And, you know, unfortunately, we're in that, you know, transition period, we're trying to establish this is a walkable area. I think this, the way that we're doing it here, um, is, as Councilman Prakash indicated, is a, is a, is a pretty happy middle ground between, you know, we're shielding the, the drive-through from other people, you know, walking past on the site. The access doesn't really impede pedestrian traffic, so I, I hon, I just, it's unfortunately a reality, the leasing climate, that we really are, you know, unreasonably constrain ourselves without the drive-through. I, I wish we didn't have to do it either, but I think it's, it's just we, we are, we have an ear to demand, and we wanna fill this building, we wanna keep it full. So, if you guys have to, you know, get in business, we're gonna stay in business. It doesn't mean that you don't see drive-throughs in downtown Birmingham, you know, the same way you would, you know, here, it's just a matter of how it's incorporated into the use and how the cars are accessing the drive-through and where they're exiting. And, you know, the fact that I think we've, you know, Mark's done a great job of keeping the building close to the road, minimizing, you know, we would've, like we said last time, we would've brought it closer to the road, except for we know that tenants are, the prospective tenants are demanding the two full rows of parking. So, we need to be able to lease this thing to make it viable, if, if we, you know, we get rid of the drive-through, it's no longer viable.
What, what do you say, it's no longer viable, you mean the whole strip mall is no longer viable, or just that corner?
I mean, we lose that tenant.
That tenant on the corner?
That's right.
Well, you cannot tell us to do it.
The lease is a design, I apologize.
I, I, what you've described as a product appeals to me.
Mm-hmm.
And it does.
Right.
And it's the way that it's laid out, I think it's certainly preferable then to have them coming around, if there's a question about it. I, I have the feeling, and I, I guess we could limit this, but, you know, once we do a couple of drive-throughs, we've already done one, potentially one, um, I'm kinda concerned that people are gonna say, well, why can't I have one, you know? Um, and I suppose we could, we could limit, we could probably limit them, I don't know. I'm not crazy about it, but I understand what you're saying, I, I just, I just...
I feel like eventually, the idea is you won't need it, right? 'Cause you'll have sufficient, the idea is if this all works out, and we hope it does as much as you guys do, that there will be sufficient pedestrian traffic so as, so that these retailers will look at the site and say, that's where we're getting our business from. But, in, you know, this is, this is one of the early incursions into establishing retail there, we need to make it as attractive a place as possible, 'cause we already get feedback, you know, for example, we approached, um, you know, a, a Starbucks, whatever, Starbucks. We approached them, and they, they had concerns about, just about car traffic on Evergreen, they prefer Southfield Road. Now, I think Evergreen is a nicer, in terms of what's, what's coming up here, but I, you know, I'm pretty set on that, they're not, so, we try to convince them. But that's, that's the type of, you know, concern we're getting, they're looking just strictly traffic count, demographics, their ability to pull customers in. You know, a destination restaurant has a little bit more ability to step out of bounds, but I think, you know, you've seen that go along too, you know, in other locations where you put somebody that's hidden and maybe knows they're there, and even though they have a reputation and they're potentially high quality, they still have trouble taking in business. You see it happen all over the place, but, um, so, we're trying to create an appealing location here, so that we can lease the building and keep the lease.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand what you're trying to do. Um, I mean, walkability is for this, for the center, I mean, the idea of attracting people to kind of a downtown area is that they will go from place to place.
Sure.
As, as, as with Birmingham and other, you know, Rochester and other, other places, they have these clusters. Um, I do have reservations about it, I think the product that you proposed is wonderful. And I, like I say, I like the fact that you're just putting around the back, because that minimizes that, that look that you receive in most drive-throughs, um, I just have reservations about it. And, uh, I'm not trying to discourage you, 'cause I think everything you're doing, I mean, I'm not trying to be negative, I guess you don't think, what you're doing is, is, is good, depending on what you're doing with the zoning, the way, the patient that's there, who's giving a lot of thought to them. Um, you, you've, uh, convinced me that you are very thorough, that you know what you're doing, and that you care about how this comes out, so, not everybody's based that, yeah. Um, but I do have, I do have concerns about it, if, if we had to have a drive-through, this is a better idea. Um, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that we ought to do it. And I'm, I'm, I just had this just like, I think, um, that, that, um, I don't know.
Yeah, um, one of the comments that, uh, Councilman Prakash brought up was, uh, something very intriguing. You know, a lot of times we, we say, here, and a, and a developer comes in and says, this is what we're going to do, and... And what we're really trying to do is we're really trying to create a walkable downtown sort of place, but something that's, that's attractive, that will be attractive to the Lawrence Tech students, the residents, and the people in the, that are in the buildings. And I just wonder if someone ought not to do a survey of the people in the buildings and say, what would make this place a better place for you? And when Dan said, like a Hallmark store, maybe something that we haven't thought of that we could kind of weave into this, this whole development as we go forward so that it does become attractive to a wider range of folks than even we thought. I don't think we have the patent on thinking.
I mean, so this develop, this proposal was born out of a survey we conducted with our existing tenants of the Travelers Towers Building upon acquisition. And that, that survey, like I mentioned, ranged in topic from, you know, our existing services at the building, but obviously like what, what, it was oriented, a good section was oriented towards retail amenities, both inside the building and outside the building. And that's, that's where this came from, honestly. This doesn't, our objective here is to make the overall investment in the property a winner. And this is, this is directly related to that effort to retain existing tenants and attracting tenants to the office building, given our investment in that is far greater than what we'll be investing in this small retail building. But, so I can't speak to the other buildings, but I would assume that the character of those tenants is roughly, with the exception of Lawrence Tech, which are obviously different, different demographics, students versus, you know, professionals. I would assume the others, the surrounding office buildings have a similar crowd as ours. And knowing some of those tenants, it's a fairly similar crowd. And I would assume that they have, they would, they would provide roughly the same feedback because, like, I think it's obvious to most of us what's lacking in the neighborhood as far as retail amenities. So you mentioned the Hallmark store, like, something like that, like a sundry shop? I agree with you, that's, that's something our tenants told us and we're open to that too.
Sure.
You know, we, you know, something like, like I said, like a convenience store, you don't have that here, you don't have CVS, you don't have, you don't have many banks, you don't have, certainly, you're lacking in food service offerings. You got a lot of things to fill in here. We, our objective is, all right, let's, let's focus on the things they wanted the most.
Sure.
And that, what you mentioned was on the list, certainly.
Yeah.
And then let's look at who, who can we attract to the site and get rents that justify the expense of building it. So that's what we're, we're absolutely committed on that in the same way you are. The only thing I can't speak to is any feedback from adjacent developments that I would just assume is roughly similar.
Yeah. For instance, if you want to buy a card, you almost have to go out of town. And that's, I just don't see any common sense to, really this size, that doesn't really have a car shop.
I think it's a car.
Car, sure. If it doesn't own a card, if you want to buy a greeting card.
Yeah.
You almost have to go out of town to have a, a location where you could buy a greeting card. And I could see someone think, today's my anniversary, I need to get a card, you know, and...
CVS.
Pardon?
CVS.
But you have to, you have to go someplace, yes.
Solid.
But it's those kind of things that I, I think would help make this a, a place where people come in in the morning, stay all day.
I agree.
And then go home after work.
I agree, absolutely. All things in that. And you can't do it all on your own, right? I totally agree with you.
Through Madam President, through Mr. Frazier. That's one of the items that the city staff is going to be partnering with the student engagement at L T U to conduct a survey. Throughout the whole district and other, not just students, but young professionals and tenants. So that is, that is something that we, we've heard loud and clear. And that's something that we'll be hopefully coming forward.
Good. Glad I thought of it. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a little history. When, I remember last year we had meetings with people, our citizen people. And the, can I think the manager of these towers?
Yeah, Ms. Sefo.
Right. But we, we as a city weren't providing amenities for their buildings. She felt that we should be providing amenities for their people, that we should, to make them successful. Now, when that, when that, those towers were built, the Town Center, the tall ones, and I worked there for a long time, there were, there was a cleaner, there was a sundry shop, Hallmark card, all kinds of stationery, everything. There was a jeweler, fine jeweler.
Movie theater.
Hmm?
Movie theater.
There was a movie theater. Movie theater, I think, was the first to build. There were three restaurants, there were restaurants and a hotel. Slowly, every one of them disappeared. People, there was even a McDonald's at one time, there was a cafeteria that made the best, you could have pie and you never had in your life. All of these things eventually disappeared. The hotel still has their dining room, there's a few things there. But, I mean, I presume the reason was that by the box people want to go home, so they don't stay down to shop there. I don't know, I'm just saying, you know, how this area has changed, that all, all of those amenities that they now want, were there at one time.
Yeah.
As an owner, but that had nothing to do with them going out gradually.
I think the story is the same in Travelers Towers. I mean, I've heard, you know, about the historical history of the, yeah, there was a restaurant, there was, actually Councilman Prakash recounted some of the history there at one of our last meetings. And, you know, I appreciate that history. And I think, I would tell, I would, I would say that, in my opinion, that reflects less the desires of the tenants to go home after work and it reflects more the changing dynamics of the retail business. I mean, it's a challenge faced by not just these offices, you know, our immediate surroundings. It's really any, you go to any suburban market, if you have high-rise buildings that were built in the seventies and eighties, they have the same problem. They have empty concourse level space, even those buildings that are on an island as far as amenities are concerned. Because the way people shop has just fundamentally changed, you know, to the point where these buildings cannot, cannot self-support anything even beyond a cafeteria. Like, we have a great cafeteria in our building and, you know, they don't make money. And that's not because of our occupancy level, it's just because, you know, people want variety and they want to leave, they want to, they want, you know, the type of access to these amenities, like these businesses just can't survive based on the demand from the office tenants inside the building if they don't face the outside world anymore. And you see it like as you walk through Traveler, I mean, Town Center, it's not like these people don't want to eat lunch, they just don't eat lunch at the same place every day. And they, that, that development's done a great job of bringing it, their cafe is top notch and I think ours is great too. And that certainly helps, but, and I would think the managers of the employers, they don't want their folks leaving, you know, if they get in a car and leave, that's a bad thing, that cuts down productivity. So the more we can keep people, you know, on feet rather than in a car, I think that's positive and that'll help us attract new office tenants because they'll say, okay, this is a place where my employees can stay in the area for lunch, but, you know, because of the changing dynamics of the retail business, I think people just crave that, like, that variety and that ability to choose and really go outside for a second, even if it's cold outside. And it's like why there's an outdoor mall in Chicago, like, people don't care, they just want to be outside.
Well, one of the things that I think led to their demise was the shelves being open to the outside.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, that was on the bone. But having said that, I like the idea of what you're doing, I'm concerned about the
I have some similar concerns as Madam President. Seymour Edgins makes me the drive-through restaurant. I make him join his location. We're talking about, and I know they have drive-throughs in Birmingham and the city, the people directly across the city hall. And that's where I'm not, I just can't see having a drive-through restaurant directly across the street. And in the same time, the developing is local. To me, it's just a, we've got some examples of other successful restaurants across the street, you know, without a drive-through. So, you know, I think the case is made that you can't find, again, that would be on you if I mentioned it, is that they operate their restaurants. We have examples here without a drive-through. So that's where I'm just not, I just don't see the possibility of driving directly across the street.
Understanding your concern in all due respect, the benefit is the tenant signs the lease and occupies the space.
Yes.
And I think that, again, to go back a couple of steps, we're trying to, we're, in tenanteding this building and leasing up this building, we're trying to be respectful of the feedback we receive from our tenants in the office buildings and the feedback we've received from the community. And it's all been fairly consistent to date. And one category of those, you know, so we're certainly trying to get like the bar grill concept, you know, really grill with an answering bar, use like a full-service restaurant, really was what I'm trying to say, in a big chunk of that space, that's, that's what hopefully be the anchor of the center. But then for the smaller, you know, inline users in the center, they're going to fit into these other buckets that we've talked about. And one of those is like the quick service, you know, but like tasteful, be done, breakfast, the coffee shop, you know, health food store, that was the category where that, this user fulfills that category. If it wasn't this user, it would be another one who also would want a drive-through. These folks all want a drive-through in this location. So if we, if you say no drive-through, I don't have a tenant for that space in that size range that performs that, that fulfills that need that people have identified. Like, there's a Big B, yes, there's this important, it's much further down the street. I know that a, that a user like this could be very susceptible in this location, but they want a drive-through.
I fully understand, but I think the big picture is not just that location, but it's the entire complex, you've got the city hall and then the development of what it will take place.
Your concern, is your concern related to the traffic? No, but I'm saying specifically with the drive-through, what do you, what about the drive-through concern?
Well, traffic. And I know you've demonstrated how it flows, but again, because it's just that small drive-through is directly across the city hall. And that's just the difference.
But I don't, I just, I'm not following line, that's a bad thing.
Because our local government.
Right.
And to see a drive-through that could possibly potentially have, you know, the trash and...
Have you seen a drive-through that like a Starbucks operates or Dunkin' Donuts? And you find those to be objectionable?
Well, no, the location. And that loca, the location of this one is directly across my government. And that's like, that's my concern. In addition to, we're trying to build a walkable, and that's what we talked about, which is a walkable, walkable.
I would counter with that by saying the, the government's...
But we can introduce there the drive-through. And again, the location is directly across the city hall.
Okay. Where we're sitting right now, the city hall complexes are fairly far removed from the street. The way I would counter that is saying, if somebody's coming to City Hall in the morning, the employees that work here, they're not going to park their car here, walk back across the street to get their cup of coffee. They're going to stop at our center or one of the neighboring centers, get what they need and come across the street. This is not, you know, I, I respect and appreciate what you're saying, but this is, this, this complex is fairly far removed from Evergreen Road. What we're trying to do here is provide like a useful amenity. So, yeah, I don't think, I don't think the drive-through is essential for like my tenants that are going to use this building, but they are certainly, it certainly would help you get your cup of coffee a lot quicker, you know, or your smoothie or whatever, a lot quicker, driving here. It's going to be useful for that, I have no question about that. I think I would be more receptive to that argument if the council, if the, if the city complex was closer to the road. But you have to drive here anyway. So either you're, so if you're going to stop at my, at our new development, hopefully, to get your breakfast or your coffee or your whatever, you're driving your car there. So whether you park there and stay ten minutes, you know, stay five minutes, get your food and leave, or you go through the drive-through, doesn't add another car, it just makes it a more attractive location for our, for our tenants. I just don't, I don't believe in, and all due respect, because I understand where you're coming from, I just do not believe it's going to add, add congestion to the area, especially given what you're doing out here, like creating this roundabout that's specifically designed to eliminate traffic congestion. And folks exiting this drive-through will either turn left and get back on Evergreen Road here, or they'll turn right and be subject to the same traffic patterns as folks exiting the office complex. So in, from that respect, from the traffic flow perspective, it doesn't stand to impact the, the city government complex. I think you're, you may be speaking to a different concept with just, I think what you're saying is just the, you objective you said of having a drive-through.
Directly across from the city hall. I'm missing that. I'm just... I think, I think, if you, I hear it directly across from City Hall, but it's really not directly across from City Hall, it's across from, I don't know, Baker Park. Or something else.
It's their Hallmark.
If you, if you could do the schematic drawing, that would be different than what you have up there. And draw something from, from the street, aiming northwest. You have a roundabout, and you see this roundabout there, this, this traffic that's going to go through this drive-through is going to be so minimal, you don't even know it because within, I don't know, a hundred feet of that corner, you're going to have people doing this. I mean, you're going to, I mean, you've got, you know, if you look at it from any site, the corners, I mean, you're going to come down here, you're going to have such a barrier of, of action, so to speak, that, that, that'd be so incidental to the development that, and I hear what you're saying, and I don't like drive-throughs, you know, but, but I don't like drive-throughs.
I don't like it.
My wife will tell you, I can't understand them when they ask you, what do I want?
No, by any kind of lineup park, I go in.
So I go in, even if it's fast food. But, but anyway, I just don't think that in this particular case, it is real negative. I think that the center is properly located, it's going to, there's going to be a lot of action on that little corner there. And, and I just, I just think it's a great improvement. These pads, I told a big fan committee today, you know, everyone's going to these pads, they, they have the, you know, like Telegraph Road, Eton Building, everybody's going out to pads now. Because, you know, we have the Star Theater, I mentioned that at the, at the committee meeting, you know, why do those restaurants still make it? If you would put a pad out in front of the Star Theater with the same businesses out there, it'd all do well. But nobody wants to go in anymore, nobody wants, they want to get out of that building that they worked in and go and get out in the sun and get, take a walk and go get something outside of that building. And, and you know, the comment was made that none of these buildings that already have towers do much inside anymore. For some reason, the new breed is just don't want to be inside that building, they're in there eight, ten, twelve dollars a day, they want to get out. You see our employees taking a walk around this building, you know, and walking around the pavilion, I mean, they just want to get out of the, the working environment. And, and I think that this addresses that. And as far as taking a sample of what the people need, we did one of the Town Center of what people wanted and, and we really, none of them say they wanted something inside the building, they all wanted something outside the building. So I think that's why it failed. But, anyways, I, I just wanted to say that if that were the thing to look at, at elevation where you could look at it northwest, you wouldn't even see that coffee sign, that roundabout. You're going to put something in the middle of a piece of art, get in the middle of that roundabout? If you're coming down the street, you won't even see it.
We have these trees here, we have this public art display out here, yeah, there's plenty, I think that's quite a bit.
You'd have one in the middle of that roundabout, a piece of art, hopefully, you know. Anyway, that's just my, Madam President.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I definitely agree that the drive-through is, is kind of obscured enough. And I think that I agree with your point that it's going to be something that's only going to be used in mornings mostly, because I compare it to the other drive-through that's across the street from City Hall, that's in Horton, down the street. You know, the, those cars are obscured, it's probably got a lot of morning traffic, but I've never seen a lineup during daytime hours or even really during the evening rush. Because, because the restaurant itself doesn't cater to, you know, a five or a five-thirty rush. But I, I hear what you're, I do hear what you're saying about we need to, you know, really keep in mind that, you know, this district has to have some sort of walkable stamp on it and a drive-through is, is kind of not conducive to that. But, you know, we have to, you know, it's hard to envision now, but I mean, this sidewalk is going to be expanded, the greenery in front is going to be expanded. So, you know, we're... Um, so you know, we're, we're looking just at this site plan, but, you know, the things that we're doing on Evergreen Road are gonna, are gonna way over, overcompensate for the drive-through, because we're, we're putting so many walkable amenities on the Evergreen Road side of it, um, that, you know, I just don't think it's gonna be, um, such an impediment visually, such an impediment traffic-wise. Um, I will tell you this, though, I think that there does need to be some sort of transition period too, because I mean, you know, we're not gonna plop down sidewalks and people are gonna start walking tomorrow. If there's a, if there's a future vision where the drive-through's eliminated, or, you know, every, we do have a limit, I would, I think that's something we could revisit. I think that's a good idea. Um, but we, I was driving past city hall last Monday, and there were a bunch of cars crowded up back there, and I thought, I'd missed a council meeting, because everybody's crowded out there. That all the Lawrence Tech students, they were last Monday, in much different weather than what's going on there right now, were playing frisbee on the front, front lawn. So, you know, even Lawrence Tech students are still driving to this location, not walkable yet. Um, you know, they're gonna be driving across the street to use this drive-through if, if they so choose to use it. So there's gotta be some sort of transition period. Um, so this is gonna hang up for me, but I, I do, I, I would support the councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Seymour's suggestion of seeing if we could have some sort of limit in the future, or if there's a vision to transition out, if we have a rediscussion, you know, if we find out, you know, this new housing unit at Lawrence Tech really did put people on the street, and it, and it kind of catalysts from there, um, do we wanna eliminate, uh, some of these drive-throughs moving forward? But for now, not, not an issue for me.
Yeah.
I think we, um, we have the wonderful challenge here in the city, especially the city center area, is that we have multiple clients to serve. We have a student population, we have a corporate business population. And what we're trying to do, and what we're trying to do with, oh, creating a walkable community is for the residents who are here after five. And so for the residents who are here after five, if they park their car and walk, they'll be able to go to these multiple places. But in the morning, we are a major pass-through and destination point, so we have a number of people who are coming in in the morning that would love to have this opportunity to grab a piece of their, a cup of their favorite coffee, or to stop in one of those venues. So I think when we look at it, we can think in one way and say, yes, that's a good fit, but it's not a good fit for this, or yes, it's a good fit over here. But when we look at the totality of what we're trying to do, I think this is a good compliment to this area, because in the evening, I could see walking from my home, where I'm on the other side of the express lane, coming over, sitting outside, having a cup of coffee. But in the morning, if I was running to city hall and had a meeting at eight, being able to drive through, to grab a cup of coffee and come in. So it's, it's a multiple, it's, we're not this homogeneous little one sleepy bedroom, we're not just corporate, we have to serve a such a complex group, and I just think that this is a good compliment. I think the location does not interfere with anything. Uh, you're absolutely right, it's, it's, it's gotta be across the street from the down for coffee, um, small, public block.
Rain garden.
The rain garden.
Down for coffee, rain garden. It's gotta be a good compliment. I'm just, alright, um, Councilwoman.
The, the thing that, if it has a saving grace is the fact that it's actually coming around from the back. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think that people are going to be, from my perspective, I don't see cars stacking up, you know, the, the people aren't gonna write, know, coming down Green Hill, because it's a drive-through, I don't think. And because it's, you, you're, you're just deliberately putting around the back to serve the locals, you know, will know, and people that work there will know, and people in the area will know, but, but the traffic that goes through here, which is mornings a lot, isn't gonna think about, it's a kind of an inconvenienced way for them to go in there, and that's the way I see it, so I...
Yeah, you'd have to know, that, that what you were looking at would obviously have a drive-through.
Right.
You know, like in the same way you would see if you saw a three standing McDonald's, they have a drive-through.
And, and even going up, up South Hill Road, there's, uh, we've got Starbucks and a couple of places, and I think over on, there's other streets down there, they're small, but they're, you know, you can tell, but, um, I think we've got one on Green Hill Road. Um, so, the fact that it's in the back, and if it's going to have it, I think that's the saving grace, to be honest with you. I think it will, I don't think it's gonna attract a lot of people that say, oh, let's stop here for coffee, because we already know it's there.
Yeah, me, I'm, I agree with you.
I mean, it's not all bad, and I don't, I don't really think, make it sound bad at all, but, you know, we, we don't wanna become over, overcome with drive-throughs.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And, and I think we've almost become paralyzed about it.
Yeah, I understand that, I completely understand it.
Alright, Councilor, any other questions?
Mr. Crowe, where do we go from here?
Okay, um, you introduced and approved the ODD, which is gonna come back on the twenty-eighth, and as we stated with the site plan, it technically hasn't been held up, brought it back for further discussion tonight, so I believe you can act on the site plan on the twenty-eighth.
Could we clarify, did we postpone to the twenty-eighth?
We, um, I'll have to check my notes, but I, I, I know we, we directed them to come back to this, the six, I mean, the seven, for a study session, and I, I believe I said that then it can come back to the twenty-eighth.
That's what I...
And, um, we, we'll, we'll try to work on that, maybe that further perspective before the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I mean, I think Mr. Cyber, excuse me, I think Mr. Cyber said that the architect could do something different because of the location or whatever in the building, uh, that's the words in Mr. Cyber's mouth, but I think it was something where you think maybe the architect could do something different here. And, and that was put over to explore at the last meeting, and, and then to come back with something, and, and I thought this was what...
That's exactly right.
It is.
And the clerk just verified that it was tabled to the next regular meeting, the twenty-eighth, but the directive was to come to the seventh study session and show the change revisions. So, we're still on track. Okay?
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Certainly, we give you a consensus vote tonight, so that they know that, that they don't have to explore this any further. Yeah, but, I, I just, I just think they, they wanna get moving on this, and, you know, I guess the words of the ninety-two days that the planner had to start expediting some of these projects, and, and...
Well, in, in this particular case, the, the good news is that you enact the ordinance a month after it was introduced, so the project hasn't been held up, it's moving along. I think the study session was helpful, and staff will work with the developer to fine-tune the presentation when it comes back on the twenty-eighth.
Moving to the next, uh, item on our agenda, um, I'm gonna ask the, that we refrain the audience here from making any audible comments, conversations, applause, or any other noise that would disrupt the process of this meeting and the council, uh, given the ability to properly conduct the student business. So we're gonna ask all noises and comments to be, uh, taken. Okay, moving to the second item on our agenda, and that's the Lawrence Technological University Hall and Complex might be...
And President, our, as the council may recall, a month or so ago, representatives from Lawrence Tech came and made a presentation on the proposed Halmin Complex biomedical engineering building. Uh, that is a precursor to them going through site plan approval. It has since gone through the planning commission with a favorable recommendation, and because of the uniqueness and the scale of this project, we wanted to bring it back tonight for the team from Lawrence Tech to focus on the site plan prior to council acting on it on April twenty-eighth. So tonight, um, we have Mr. Joe Verizer, Lawrence Tech architect, um, I'll ask him to come up, up here and introduce his team, and they're here to talk about the specifics of the site plan, and then planning staff will be available for any questions that the council may have.
I'm Joe Verizer, I'm the university architect for Lawrence Technological University at twenty-one thousand west ten mile road itself. I have a couple of people here with me tonight that'll elaborate on some things that I'll say, because I, I know I can't keep track of all of the items myself. I have with me Mr. Dick Weeden from Albert Connaught Associates, and he can drop in and introduce himself. And then I have also Rachel Scott from PDA to talk about anything that you'd have with regard to stormwater management, or items of that nature, so those are my two principal assistants here tonight to get me through what I myself can't deliver, okay? I'd like to start just by reminding you about the site itself.
I think you can hear me alright, if I'm over here? This is our parcel here, on the corner, covers all of this area. The building we're talking about, and I'll tell you first, that this is our existing science building that parallels the service drive along Northwestern Highway. Here is the original nineteen fifty-three started construction engineering building down here and over through here, up in this area. And then this, the new building we're talking about is gonna go right here on this corner. And I'll show you more about that with another round of women. What I wanna point out is why is it there? And it's because of the blend, the merging of the programs of the university. The principal functions in the building are gonna be very lab-oriented, or lab-based, and they come supporting two programs, biomedical engineering, and you hear biomedical, if you're science, and you hear engineering. You see two buildings being linked by a program that actually links not only the, the building functions, but the use of the faculty, and the path that students will take primarily between the two facilities. So that location became imperative to just the logic associated with the development and evolution of the programs. One of the things that's different in, in Pircula today, and not just ours, it's everywhere. The traditional classroom of thirty students or more is a little bit thing of the past, where you just have chairs or, or spots to write, or, uh, tables, and some chairs along tables. That's the classic image you have of a classroom, and that's not what we have today. Everything today, or not everything, that's a false statement, but nearly everything is, the predominance is in the lab environment, where your density is much lower. We're talking nominally sixteen student type capacity compared to yesteryear at thirty, almost one half. So to dominate the same number of students, you need almost twice as much space, and it's far more technical and complex space, okay? The building, as we have it here oriented, so that the science building is up here, engineering is here, and our new building links the two, oop, that wasn't right, uh, the science is here, and the building, this shows the first floor plan, the building links at the third floor. Reason, we have to deal with coming through the site, hopefully never need it, but there's a public path that we have to maintain, that goes through the heart of the campus, so that if we ever needed it, God forbid, we'd have the ability to fight for it. Now, we do have access from the other side of that, but if they come from this side, they need to be able to go through, fire trucks don't back up, they need to continue to move forward. So we go under the, what I'll call the underpass, so this is three-story here, the third story goes clear from the science building all the way over to this point. Now, when we do this addition, we do take off a little piece of the site of the parking lot. We reduce the parking by, and I don't remember the number up hand, the parking spaces, but because of the lower density of the space and the ample amount of parking that we have at the rear of the site, working with the city planner, it has been determined that we are well within the ordinance for parking requirements, even with the loss of those spaces. Uh, the drive, as you come in, is made up of concrete that goes underneath the building, it's a concrete slab heavily reinforced to be able to support if we ever need a fire truck going through there. In the space adjacent underneath there, between that drive path and the existing science building, we also have concrete, but it'll be scored differently and finished slightly differently, so there's a delineation between the path through and the path adjacent. In addition, there's an area, an oval area, as you can see, and that's a raised area and planted area, landscaping. On that, the, the technical, there is a description of the landscape, you wanna help with that if you need to know it, but it'll be a landscaped area of moderate height. Immediately over that, and in the design of the building, there's an open passage through, like a funnel through, it goes right through the, uh, third floor, and that allows us to come down through, illuminate this area more during the day for somebody growing. Uh, the, in addition, you get rainwater that comes down from here. The other thing that we're doing is planting, and I think it's called Nomo or Lomo, Lomo grasses, that's, it only gets as much as ten, twelve inches tall, uh, and is intended to look long and stay long, you don't cut that short. And lastly, we have, in one area, you may recall, I showed you some, some videos, and you saw the, it all falls like a football. That was the enclosure for the communicating stair between the three floors. And immediately beneath that, we have a small shallow static pond, it's a filtration system on it, it's not deep or anything, and, and that adds an accent that's visible down through that tower, and adds to the landscaping of the area. In addition, we have some swale in through here that captures, you take rainwater off of the building, and we do two things with it. Part of it goes to a cistern that is used to then distribute water to the irrigation system, and to, to do the lawn watering and the irrigation of the plantings. What doesn't go into that cistern, it's there, we have a swale that's here capturing the stormwater, and then the, then the resurface is a lot, because it'll damage it quite a bit during construction and in the way around that, you're gonna travel on it and bring equipment in on it, you're gonna scorch it pretty badly.
Did you say you had a rain, rain? No, go ahead.
We had bioflail, that would be a word.
You didn't say bioflail.
Swale was...
It was a word. It didn't say bio.
Okay. I have your words for me. You're not worried, you're like, you don't use the word bioflail anymore, it's a time. Alright, we got this ditch, this, long ditch perfect. Ditch is okay. We have a little ditch along here that captures some of the rainwater. And, uh, I have an expert here from PDA that can talk about our ditch design, and we'll learn more about it. In addition, this water tends to sheet off today, and so there is a small ditch along, along the edge, that will capture that, and it's designed such a way to filter it before it goes into the tile that takes it down and dispenses it. I've told you as much as I can remember to talk about intelligently, the rest I'd be bluffing. So with that, I'm gonna ask Dick if he could contribute anything more to what I said, or...
Great job, Joe.
Or open it up for questions to the council.
Alright, Councilor, any questions regarding the site?
Just a statement. We're, um, we're over today, saw the, you know, the groundbreaking, and we look forward to, at least I'll speak to myself, I look forward to the next groundbreaking, very sized, um, I think the building's got great design, um, and plan to vote for this whenever it comes back for the official vote. And I think you, the thing that always impresses me is between the, the cedum on the roof and the thermo geological stuff that you're doing, I mean, you're, you're just such a model of, of green and, and what you're teaching your students. And it's, I would hope that, you know, and, I mean, if your facilities didn't reflect that, shame on you, so, um, but they do.
Thank you. You reminded me of something, I don't know what triggered it, but I wanna point out two other things. We also have the, I can show on here, a bicycle rack. We thought about the bicycle, we've got that, that's in the ordinance anyway, we, we have that in here as part of the requirements, and that's in the design. We are also adding a path that takes us from the building here out to the service drive. Now, we don't link it this way, that's another whole...
Yes.
Yes, that's another whole story and another point in time, and the word "yes" came out very quickly from the planner. Uh, but what we are also doing is part of the first project that had the groundbreaking this morning, at the north end of that large lot, oh, yeah, thank you. this morning, at the north end of that large lot, oh, yeah. Back when we put this housing in here that we broke ground on this morning, we are gonna put a path that goes along here, all the way back out to, well, it takes out to the service drive and up to the corner that we developed in this corner, year and a half ago now. We will complete that link this fall. Thank you. Okay. That's a commitment we made and got that scheduled, they're already aware of that with that project, so that it's there before this one even starts.
Yes, I don't have a problem with what you said. Not a print, I'm a little confused. You, shows on here, you have two south elevations that are completely different. Are they just mislabeled, or?
No, they're not mislabeled.
It's the south elevation that's...
The one, okay, the one, the one on the bottom?
Yeah.
This is south elevation. Okay? The other one that you're looking at is the south elevation of the south wall of the science building, which is the only connection again at the science building, is the third floor. So, there's two floors of that elevation that are exposed. In other words, it's this elevation right here, looking this way.
Okay.
That's why there's two south elevations.
It was a little confusing when I was going through the prints.
And actually, that wall is just a brick wall that matches what's there, parallels the existing brick wall and affords us the opportunity to provide an egress for ADA compliance out of the science building at that lower level, which is not good.
Okay. All right. No, I think it's a good-looking building, and it helps, as Mr. Seibert said, it helps show the advanced thinking that's going on over at Lawrence Tech that you, I think you're a model for other universities, you know, what can be done, and I think it's such a great thing for the students because as they see it being introduced into the university, as they leave and go, you know, after they graduate and go off, you know, that's buried in their thought process of what they can, what's possible. So, I applaud it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just echo, it's important to foster this town and gown relationship. The six of us on council and the mayor were at the groundbreaking, pleased to be there this morning, because as I was mentioning to President Maggill, you know, businesses ebb and flow, and we have to somehow try and always convince businesses to stay here, or they wanna go to Detroit where it's, you know, a little more exciting, or they wanna go out, you know, into the sprawl of the north and west. But not only, you know, we don't, you know, Lawrence Tech is a rock, you know, you are expanding and really becoming more traditional campus, and I'm so excited to be a part of the council that gets to welcome this into the city of Southfield. And it goes hand in hand with our previous presentation, it goes hand in hand with the things that we're talking about in the city center. I went to Michigan State and just seeing, you know, Grand River and Michigan Avenue, I just really see that Evergreen Road corridor really, and Central Park Boulevard, really mirroring what Michigan State looks like, in all of its positive aspects. But, you know, I'll repeat again, there were scores of students last Monday when the weather was nice and the opening day ended, out here on the front lawn here. So what we can do on the city council to support your expansion, to support your growth, because it helps the city of Southfield in every way, I think we're willing to do. So, coming in is of course a supportive vote, and I think that the visual that we got the last time, every presentation had, you know, the 3D graphics where you go in and out of the building, we could see things a little bit better, but the visual was state-of-the-art and was really dynamic and really helped us to better understand the project, which is why I probably have so few questions right now.
I wanna let council vote. Twenty seventeen, we have a fighting committee for the launch Northwestern Service Drive from there all the way to Evergreen Road, and that is the northern boundary of LCU. Mr. Crowe and I have some conversations, and it may be a future transportation assistance program grant, where we look to do something with, you know, improve street lighting, banners, kind of clean that up, the crosswalk and the bike path would be part of that, but the commitment's there for twenty seventeen. It's possible that with what's being discussed in the legislature, you could see that move out the year, we've had a number of our road projects move to advance here, and so it could be as soon as twenty sixteen.
I think people at Lawrence Tech that have known me for a period of time know that I've been a big supporter of the university for many, many years. And I feel we have a mutual dependency, quite frankly. I mean, we're the premier university in this area, is what I'm concerned, and the technical, the relationship to the auto industry, the history is fantastic, and we're such a part of Detroit and what the city stands for. I am very supportive of this plan. I said to, I'm not sure who I said this to, but we were talking to so many people this morning, and I said, we're kind of joined as a hip, which we are, you know, we have an interdependency, your success and our success is, I think, we're co-dependent to a certain extent. And I'm extremely proud of the university and what you've done in so many ways, and I think it's a beautiful plan. I'm totally supporting that. So, thank you for all that you've done, and the great presentation that, the visuals was awesome, it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you, I agree with my colleagues, and you were pulled to the groundbreaking in September.
That was nice.
Yeah, just, next step is, they will be coming forward to city council on April twenty-eighth. It is a site plan only. We do plan on showing the video again at that time because it's gonna be broadcast on cable and to the public. I just looked at the application, was submitted on February fourth, and if the council acts on it on April twenty-eighth, it's gone through our entire process in eighty-three days, which is a model for best practices, so.
How you doing on it?
So we'll, we look forward to having them back on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I can't let that go, Jerry. I mean, we don't have people just prepared in most of these cases, and those do it so far ahead of the crowd to get it done, and the logic of this side, because they're true in that very time, that's phenomenal.
And I know that was, you know, council's directive, and I know the council met with them prior too, and, you know, they had an excellent staff that worked with Mr. Spence and I in getting everything ready, but I wanted to showcase the fact that when we all work together, it is possible to get it in under the ninety-two day target, this one happens to be eighty-three days.
No, it's gonna have Albert Kahn Associates, I'm sure. Yes, very big.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We're gonna continue, we're gonna, as I said before, our funding for with LCU.
Yeah, Madam President and to the Honorable Councilman Mayor, Madam Clerk, wanna frame this council item, we're hoping to get a consensus whether or not the support can move forward. In a larger step back, there was a meeting back in February with LCU, and we are in preliminary discussions pertaining to a memorandum of understanding with Lawrence Tech. The memorandum of understanding, we have found a couple other universities that have entered into similar arrangements between the city and the university, and looking at the National Town and Gown Association, a number of other communities that are doing that. There are three areas that we're looking at, the kind of cooperative management areas, that would be where the city on various engineering projects would give LCU students a chance to be involved in the design, maybe do some preliminary architectural concept work for us, and there's been some examples of that. Others, maybe where they assist the city management in making staff training in different areas. So, cooperative management ventures, business development, and entrepreneurial development would be the third, the second area of this memorandum of understanding. And then the third area is place-making and quality of life. And the element we're looking at right now is what I think is really about, you know, my place, place-making, the quality of life, that both our residents from our business community and our homeowners, as well as our university students from LCU, Central Michigan, the other universities. Some of you seen this presentation as part of the Economic Development Committee. We have budgeted this position in the preliminary budgets that have been transmitted to the mayor, and which will later on become the city council. So I wanted to frame it out, we're looking to see if there's a consensus to move this forward. This would eventually be memorialized by way of a separate agreement, which would be a subset of this memorandum of understanding.
I just, Mr. Speaker, as we're talking, the National League of Cities really promotes, they gave some examples of cities who are currently doing this, and this is the way that we connect, we are contributing to educating the workforce, through practical experiences, and we're reading the benefits of these young innovative minds. It's a great way, and I just wanna tag on to that, there is an official organization called Town and Gown, and that we as a city, because we have such a, we are becoming a university town, we should officially become a member of that organization, but this is right on target with what other cities are doing and taking advantage of having the benefit of the university administration.
So, Mr. Zorn did an outstanding job of the lead-up for this presentation item. So again, the Economic Development Committee heard from Phil Lucas, who is a student at Lawrence Tech, who would be the proposed person that we would be looking to engage for this position. Mr. Lucas is out of town, he's in Germany on assignment, and I'm here to introduce Kevin Finn, who is the dean of students, who's going to give a presentation that Phil has given at the Agnes Film.
My name's Gavin, Kevin Finn, Dean of Students. Picture me twenty years younger, and then you might think of Phil. I think actually you know the two of us though, my hair might be longer than his now, he cut it short, and I ruined mine back, so. Anyways, the name of our presentation is Better Together, because like the comments that we've heard this evening, when we're working together and you're working with us and vice versa, it's just a much better deal. And so, this presentation studies Southfield City Center, obviously we took Austin, here to the Southfield, and also the Chamber of Commerce that put this together. So there's some things you may or may not know, we just had our largest freshman class in our history at Lawrence Tech this past year. This past Friday was something really exciting, that's when you ask the existing students who are living on campus, who are gonna commit to be on campus next year. And that, if you know Cal students, they procrastinate. This year we already have a hundred students who are already going to school saying, we're gonna stay on your campus, or seeing students wanna stay on campus, they wanna be active, and that's because what we're doing all together to make the city better for them. We have actually over seven hundred international students from forty-two different countries, and then six hundred students live on the Southfield campus now, soon to be about seven hundred and fifty, that's not counting students who live at Arbor Lots, and then quite frankly, some of the other compartment complexes that are close by as well. But the name of the game for us is enrollment, retention, and graduation. We wanna get them to come to Lawrence Tech, we wanna keep them, of course, we wanna graduate them. So, providing students with an engaging experience outside of the classroom is probably the number one concern of students when they're selecting a college. We like to believe in eighteen-year-olds thinking about their future, some do. I think of my wife often, she has a picture when she was five, she's designing a house at Stickley, and she has a brick in her hand, well, she's an architect now, that's amazing. When I was five, I wanted to go to recess. So, most eighteen-year-olds are thinking about recess as well. They wanna go to a college that has a thriving community around them, somewhere they're gonna have a lot of fun. So the game has to go beyond the borders of our campus, we need your help with that. It's a little strong, we know that things that we can do at this position, though, is still a stronger connection between students and the city, improve and experience, and grow greater and better citizens as well. They're gonna, they're gonna wanna stay in the city, they're gonna become our leaders, so. Dr. Maggill said that really well, we had a reception on Friday night for our international students, we'll be finishing up, he says, you know, some of you are going to be future mayors, future councilmen and women, but this is where we start to grow them, so you develop those responsibilities, they're going to be the leaders of the future, and we wanna decrease brain drain, we don't want these students to come here and leave, so if they're having great experiences, they will today. And it's interesting, you know, Phil's a great example of that, he graduated two years ago. We can't get him to leave our campus, I don't want him, he's my right hand, but we're seeing it with more students, they wanna stay here because the same things happen, we'll continue to grow that number. So solutions, a full-time resource focused on student relationship with the LCU administration, as well as with here at the city, and then connecting all this together. Now, we're also going to pay a portion of the salary, so we're looking at splitting it halfway, so we're not asking you just to pay for the salary, we're gonna facilitate forward as well. And we're also gonna give Phil resources for other students that he can hire to help with this, because it's important to engage with students who are going through this experience right now. Our successes in the past include our third place competition that we did, that's actually some of the area's restaurants in the area are starting to model. Our annual homecoming run and walk, we'll be doing this for a third year this year, but that has had over a hundred people each year, and a lot of people in the community have taken part in that. Different functions that we've been at local establishments, we have like, what a lot of people run is over a hundred athletic competitions that will take place on our campus next year. That means other schools coming to visit. Some of the schools, they will be at the local hotels for three days, because they're playing hockey here, they might play on Friday and Saturday night. We wanna connect that better so they can realize, like, all these great things they could do here. Different events we do with the city center, and then we started a transit program, you might not know this, but if you haven't seen our band, it's finally labeled now, that runs seven days a week, has taken our students to local business in the area, we're gonna expand that even further this fall. That way, one, those days when you can't walk, when there is snow, or tell our students, don't bring cars, you don't need them, we can, one, you can walk to places, which we're all going, but also those times when maybe they need a ride to the CVS until eleven p.m. at night, it is safer just to take them in a car at that point. Sometimes they're too brave out late at night, that's the time when I get home calls. So some next steps, we'd like to develop a huge welcome-back campaign this August that welcomes all of our students back to the city of Southfield, not just Lawrence Tech, the University of Phoenix, Central Michigan, Open Community College, let them know that we're proud of them being here, and we'll see them stay and do other things here. Develop a more formalized student discount program than what we maybe have currently for students, it's there, but it's not very visible. More community service opportunities, I'm kind of excited about what we're going to be doing in August with the election. Over fifty, fifty to sixty Lawrence Tech students will be helping with the, at the election forum, we're gonna organize this up again in November. We want our students, they love to do service, we want them to do more of that service here in our city of Southfield. That will really grow investment on their end as well, but also other people around the area will appreciate that as well. And doing more partnering with the Southfield Parks and Rec. I know that one of the biggest celebrations on our campus are one fraternity's volleyball blast, and they raised money for Special Olympics, and we're gonna organize that to grow it this year, and we're gonna see a Southfield Parks and Recreation on that. I'm trying to make this one now. Extend some of our cultural functions, we do a large movie series, we were able to, universities have movie titles that are not first run anywhere, but that before you see them out on the TV and so on, and they're mostly in the cultural areas, so for example, this past year, one of the Academy nominated films was a film about a young girl in Saudi Arabia who wants to learn to ride a bike. We get rights to that, we can extend it to our community, so build that where somebody here in Southfield would like to come see that movie, be a part of the discussions that are going on, that we extend that, that costs someone anything. And it's developed scholarships for Southfield High School graduates too, I think that's an important step as well. We love when, we have students from Southfield, our schools, but we need to develop that more of a connection and celebrate those students who win those scholarships. We're implementing that survey that was mentioned earlier, we're gonna learn more about the student spending patterns and what they're looking for, but the other part of that is it will be, we're working with one of our professors, it'll be scientifically valid too, so it's not just one surveys where you get asked questions, but you really can't draw conclusions from it. Job hears, we just did this a few weeks ago, we had a job here that was focused on opportunities in the city of Southfield, many of the employers here participated in that, we're gonna get them in the fall time, for those students who are coming to campus, looking for a job, for marketing for them, you know, work in your community at that time. So some measurables you can look at. Now, first of all, the student survey, we will share those results with you, obviously, where I'm very interested myself, we're also working with the city right now and designing that, we're comparing it in the city center, but we'll share those results so you can see what, you know, our students are saying, and we'll send that survey out to the students of other schools in the area as well. Design and Welcome Back Week, we're very excited this year at our convocation, our speaker will be Senator Levin, Dr. Maggill will be presenting him with a Global Citizens Award. Convocation is when you initiate all your new students to the campus, we're doing it this year on a weekend, and we're gonna invite you all to be a part of that, but continue that out through a series of different events, like, one of the craziest things we do is Midnight Madness at Meyer, we get our students on buses, and they go to Meyer, and Meyer's great, the one on twelve mile telegraph, they run a lot of programs, they let them go shopping and stuff, so extend some of those activities, like, bringing the community to be a part of that. When you are in Lansing, when the students are coming back, everybody knows they're coming back, you know, there's an excitement in the air, we gotta build upon that.
I remember the Midnight Madness at Michigan.
I remember the Midnight Madness at, um, it is fun.
Yeah. Got some good deals, TVs.
You can get some great deals.
Yeah.
If not, there might be other problems or issues, obviously.
A lot of looting.
We also want to develop some, um, uh, different advisory boards with our neighbors and also of our businesses with our students so they can kind of come together and work on ideas. So, you know, the goal of this is to provide some results, obviously, uh, for the continued to build on these partnerships we've been talking about, and, uh, we're excited. Uh, I thank all of you also for coming out today. A big moment for us, and, uh, we're going to continue to grow more students coming to the campus. We all can, um, kind of, obviously.
The one point I would like to add, so Kevin, and you mentioned it regarding Meyer, but this is going to be a, a connection between the city, the entire City of Southfield and Lawrence Tech, so not just necessarily the city center area, but we want everyone to feel involved in the campus and create that language. Our, our, um, desire is to bring this back to the April twenty-eighth council meeting, work with the city attorney to develop a contract that would be between the city and Lawrence Tech. The position would be a Lawrence Tech position where we would create a contract where we would look at the vegetables and make installment payments, um, through the term of that contract, if this is approved.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. First of all, great, you have my support completely. Everything that I said, last go around, ditto. Uh, my suggestion is, at our last televised council meeting, we got beat up pretty badly about the roads in Southfield, and, uh, you know, Channel Seven and Channel Four, I think, did stories about that. And we were on the defense during most of the council meetings. Councilman Prakati and I and others spoke out, you know, and say, you know, "We have a lot of pride in this city. We want to pump out some of the good things that are happening." My suggestion is, at our next council meeting, um, we really, you know, I, I know this is coming back, I know the video is coming back from the Toddman Building, but we even go above and beyond and really do a whole section of our council meeting promoting what just happened with the ground breaking, hopefully, you know, so we can get some footage from it, promoting what's happening, um, with the, with the new building that we're hopefully going to approve, and also promoting and fostering this town gown relationship. I would like to see Cable Fifteen put together, um, you know, some sort of video, um, that really highlights all of the things that have been going on, kind of culminating at the same time, um, because, you know, we need to pump out the good things that are going on in our community, the things that we do take pride in. So that's my suggestion. Um, I would like to see a real B T video, something at the council meeting where we can kind of have a Lawrence Tech celebration for all the good things that happened.
You articulated what we talked about in our council president meeting, and those with these types of, uh, activities in Southfield, all the doing needs to be, uh, given to the public and really, and we've got to start to be our own.
Absolutely, absolutely. Perfect.
And we need to be given to the public.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mayor Lawrence.
I just wanted to say, um, kind of narrow, narrow what you said. We, um, we have this great opportunity, and it's bringing the, um, bringing our, our population, seven hundred, into the city, and, uh, it's interesting, our Myers. I was there one night doing a eleven o'clock run or ten o'clock run, and there was a bus, um, uh, foreign visitors, and one of the staff was at Myers, and they sat there, and it was a tour bus, and, and like a nice fucking night in that Myers. And I kind of, I asked them, I said, "Who are you?" And they said, "We're here for a conference, and this is one of our staff." And so our Myers is, is, is an interesting, uh, place, but I, my son wants to say that I know about the, the Midnight Madness. I, um, I really like that, and I think that another part we haven't talked about is that we kind of include on both of our websites, for Lawrence Tech and for the city, events that are related to what's happening at L T U. So if you're a resident, you can click on and say, "Well, oh, I didn't know there was a game." You can click on and say, "Games tonight." And so we can switch websites, because I don't see that happening, and I think that, that's a way for both of us, like for us to, to have, um, we have a cleanup day, and your students can see, and if they didn't know about it, they could click and say, "What's happening in the city?" We have jazz in a couple of our restaurants in the City of Southfield. You go up to Nicole's on Thursday night, it's a whole big jazz thing, and, and, um, I have a young person that, um, is volunteering, and he, he looks for places, he's a jazz guy, and he's in college, and he's looking for spots, and he wants to go in and drop in and do a jazz session, and he only sees, or he is about, "Well, look, we have that app," when he was just.
Interesting, too. One of the things that, one of the items in the job description is to develop an application that people could use to volunteer on, if you're self-employed, so that's one I think that would happen.
But I want us as a city to include your role.
And I, um, actually, we have met with, um, technology services, and internally we are developing an app that will, um, integrate all the different activities with the library with Lawrence Tech, and it'll all be on an event page, and if you download the app, and if you're in certain areas, that will come directly to your phone. We are working on that, too. That is really important to put out.
Or to be up and running by the end of May.
Yes, yes.
And why don't you tell them about the other last points?
Um, IT has also, um, integrated another component where they can place, um, beacons in different locations, and so the beacon, it will not capture any private information. But if you downloaded the app and in, let's say you were in the city council chambers, and you have the app, it will send you a link to the council agenda. Or if you're, you're at Parks and Recreation, it will send you a link to renting a park. Or if we put one at Lawrence Tech, it will send you a link to event connectivity.
Excuse me, Shelley. I'm going to answer the noise, the limited background in the council chambers, since the next time you're asked, we remove.
So we're really excited about all the technology that is available, and we are working with technology services to bring that forward. And again, it will not be intrusive, so you, it won't capture any data from any personal phone, but if you do get that app, it will connect you to different things that are available on our website, so we'll keep pushing out information to people.
I just wanted to add one thing. This is for future conversations. When we talk about people walking in at summer nights or in the summertime, almost every city has those, they're like little poles, light high, it's usually a light on it or emergency tone, and you kind of know that this is a safe walk area, it's usually connected to the university, and if you pick it up, you get like your security or access. I would like to see, I think that does more than just for the students, it encourages the community, it's a safe area, and you can actually beam and music. And I've seen some community where these little poles will play soft music at night while people are out walking or sitting at these outside restaurants. And, uh, I just, I, I see so many opportunities with this, to create that walkable area.
All right. Um, council, we will keep it consistent, but I do want to encourage, uh, you guys, there's a conference coming up in June, International Town and Down Relationship Conference in South Carolina. I think we have some of the time, just to forge even further relationships with our partners, in June. It's the first of all, June. I think it's the fourth, three or four. All right, we'll start with the consensus, um, for time.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
Can I say yes as well? All right, so we'll be.
Have a good night, and don't forget our groundbreaking on September nineteenth.
I will be there.
Will be there.
Yeah. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the long town, this is another item that we definitely want to give some attention to in the media with the solar panel roof and charging station. And Mr. Crowe is taking his place.
Uh, Mr. Spence will, but if you could give us a minute or two to read up the presentation.
And Madam President, I just want to remind council, uh, June of twenty twelve, you approved the PACE program. Southfield was the first community to sign on, uh, which we're about to see, they have been working with Andy Levin on this project. We meet monthly on the PACE program, and property for assessment, it's almost like a monthly sales meeting. One of the largest challenges has been getting property owners to work with the program, and then getting the assessment to where it can be transferred back to the tenants. We continue to work through those issues, and I can't tell you how excited I am for the ownership of one eight hundred law and their, their vision to move this forward, and even the new company who will be, uh, using this as part of their marketing and their, their sales office, uh, and you're about to see what they're proposing.
Is this the only, is this the only project that Andy Levin's?
This is, this will be the first PACE program in the state of Michigan. And the press release was sent out last Tuesday or Wednesday?
Yes, last Tuesday.
And that before the council?
Southfield was promoted.
Yeah, I cannot stand it, just going to.
The press release was very complimentary to the City of Southfield and our leadership.
How long have you been there?
Uh, I, I've seen the press release, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I've done it.
I'm not sure if it's been published. Uh, that, as council president indicated, that needs to be our next push.
Uh, the next item on your agenda is a site plan for what is the one eight hundred law firm building. Uh, it's currently on the, its, uh, location on Lotta Road, we're just south of I six ninety-six. Uh, the project area itself is, uh, as you can see by the aerial photo here, uh, would actually be on the north portion of the parking lots, will be north of the existing building, right in this area, right in here. Proposal is for a six thousand square foot carport on this particular piece of property. Uh, associated with that is, uh, solar panels on the roof. Uh, Mr. Ari Kresh, who owns this particular building, uh, is, uh, very much into sustainable energy, alternative energy resources and sources, uh, so he is doing this, uh, particular project in order to actually reduce some of his, uh, energy consumption, and, uh, you'll see as I, as I pass this on to the petitioners here, uh, just what the cost savings and the energy savings are going to be for this particular petitioner for this particular project. Uh, so with that, I'm going to pass this off to, uh, Mr. Prasat Gulapali and, uh, Banshi Murky from S R I Energy. He'll explain their company, uh, then the project itself, and then again, the benefits that this project is going to give to the current property owner.
And can you spell your first and last name along with your business district?
Sure. Thank you, Jeff, for the introduction. My name is Prasat Gulapali. I'm the president of S R I Energy LLC. Are you wanting an address, too?
Your district.
Address, two four three seven one Catherine Industrial Drive, Suite two thirty-one Novi, four eight three seven five. Okay, thank you. Uh, thanks, Jeff, and I appreciate all the team you have here, it's been a great help in making this project. This is the, like, the way the Southfield trademark is center of it all, this is truly a project, and it makes really a Southfield a center of it all. We have technology here that is a huge investment by Ari, the owner of the building, and the technology that we are bringing, this is the first clean tech building in the state of Michigan with the technology we are bringing in. There is a lot of elements that gone into the project, but the focus of today's presentation is primarily to give the introduction of, of the company, that what we represent as a solar company, and also about this, uh, site plan, which is a subset of the total picture. Just press the right button. So like the way I said, this is going to be the, the first clean tech project with respect to what we are talking about in Southfield. I'm going to go through my slides with respect to the company itself. Like Ari's vision is creating a sustainable environment through this clean tech. That's all you might have seen in the media in terms of carbon footprint reduction, sustainability and all that. So the solar is one of the technologies that's out there which will help in reducing the carbon footprint sustainability. So that's our vision of the company, too. So that's how we both are aligned in making this project here in Southfield. As a company, we are a total turnkey solutions company, from site assessment, coming to the building, looking at the building, design, engineering solutions, bringing financing, whether it's through pace, non-pace, I mean, that's another important thing, when we talked about pace being the first one, so that's another important aspect, you know, to look at it. In fact, we are on a national press release here with respect to what's going on in this project. I think it's a great news for us in Southfield and also the rest of the state. So I think that's a really great news for us. So as a company, we are in the commercial, industrial, municipalities, nonprofits, and residential segments, that where we provide solar solutions. And the markets, we are in, of course, a Michigan-based company. We are very proud of being Michigan. Today, we have opportunities coming outside from India, Middle East and all. It's really a great news for us in terms of exporting the technology and making things. And this project is actually going to be a great example to showcase to anyone that's coming here to understand how this works. So that's another important thing to look at. Now, these are just the examples, and I think you might have seen in the media, but I just want to like go through it in a high level, uh, what the, uh, the solar panels means from a homes, from municipalities, from a buildings perspective. So that's my home to showcase an example. The one you see on the top are the solar panels. That's what it looks like. So that's how I started my business, like any entrepreneur from the basement or the garage, so in my case, I started from the roof, so that's my business. So, and then I put a deck on the top, so just to showcase what are the ways to do solar. So wherever there is a south-facing real estate, and that, that's the, the spot, if we could have panels, prepare a solar panel, that generates power and that offsets the energy. Today, the way how I have it, I have it on forty-plus panels, I'm actually offsetting my D T E bill for the next twenty-five years. So that's the beauty of technology, so it works, so. That's about a building we have done in Detroit, which is an office building, and you can see the panels are laid out flat on the roof, and there is no penetration, just a single block that holds it. So any kind of roof warranties or any issues with respect to the, the future twenty-five, thirty-year warranty of the roof, all will be in place. That's, that's another aspect that is going in the project here in this building. So we have a rooftop system also there. And we have done a project in City of River Rouge, the mayor is so interested, he wanted to like make it happen in the project, so I've gone through this council meeting, this apparently, you know, like you guys thinking beyond the box to look at future, and this is a small project. I mean, he is kind of wanted to do it at that level, and he has really done it. So that's an example of a project we have done at City of River Rouge.
So much did they ask that they're like?
That is very small, like, we're talking about here, uh, forty panels, solar panels, maybe like, maybe two hundred, they ended up, just an example to start off.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, everybody else, so that's right. So the going solar, the main attributes are, of course, it's helping in saving the energy, it generates power, and it offsets your energy. Going green, which is a tagline that you all see, which is a true carbon footprint reduction, that's a really a thing that you have noticed, but of course, from a dollar savings, so definitely helps the bottom line. So how it all works is, like, you have a source of power coming from, like, anything else, you know, for every source of energy that we need, we have to pay for it, whether it's, we're calling it a hole or any attribute, right? Here, green, solar, we don't have any cost element to it, so it's a free source of energy that we have. That's falling on the solar panels that are up on the roof, and they're all connected together as a string, and our own technicalities, but that's how they're all, all the energy that is captured from the sun is comes into your electrical panel in the basement. So the, the power the panel generates is a D C power, and that goes into the A C through an inverter, and then it's connected to your panel. A job like this, like my home, usually takes like around three to four days to do it, the real construction time to put the panel up on the roof and connect it. But a commercial project depends on, you know, how complex the project is, but a small home, we're looking at around anywhere from two to three days to complete the project. So this is, uh, the, the scope actually we are talking about, want to showcase the carport that's in the parking lot of one eight hundred law firm, that where we are using the car parking space to leverage the space to generate power and achieve the objectives. The solar technology needs a lot of footprint in terms of the real estate, and in a commercial space like this, you don't have that much real estate, like open land or open fields or something. So that's why we have to be creative in terms of putting a structure and taking the benefit of the technology and all that. So we're building like any other standard carport structure, I mean, take the panels off, it's like any other apartment complex carports. So we are leveraging the similar format, but we are leveraging the roof by putting a solar panel. So you have, you're leveraging both, so you're using that carport structure to generate power. So that's the main focus. I think this is where the, we need help and approval for the scope of effort that's going in. This is actually offsetting around 25% of the bill right now as far as the total. So that's another view of it. And also, we are installing, yeah, we are also putting a charging station right below that too, right? So that's another, you see, two stations are there, which is a starting point, and if things go well, you know, Ari is really interested in putting more based on, you know, how he sees the tenants at the building. When it comes to the city of Southfield, like any other town, like you see in the media advertising about the community going green or city promoting green, so these are the attributes that the city will benefit by doing this project. Of course, promoting the sustainability itself is an example of what we're doing here. And reducing the carbon footprint, the total project, if you look at it, that's the carbon footprint reduction, that's a real true data with respect to department of energy and all that. So we are contributing that much towards environment with this project here. And also, as far as our expansion, my business, like, being solar, it's a clean tech, we are growing, doubling our growth every year over year. I mean, we've been closing one or two projects every week, and this is a real great news for, as a clean tech for Michigan. Being here in Southfield, I'm hoping we can even entertain the Lawrence Tech kids to come in and learn from this, and then hopefully create a job opportunity out of this. So this is going to be a center in terms of the pace initiative, the technology, and the location itself, where it is as a building. And we ourselves are going to, even our satellite office, put like few sales guys there to kind of, you know, educate, outreach, and hopefully close the deals. So that's initiative, that, we coming from Novi, we are going to be opening up an office in the building too. Not sure how many, but, you know, that, at least we'll have two people, three people to start with, and hopefully we'll ramp it up. But as far as the rest of the work, we're looking at anywhere like 20-plus, you know, people helping with the project on a monthly basis. I think that's, yeah, that's pretty much the project, high level. I mean, there's so, so much to it, but I just want to at least give a high level perspective on the scope here. Any questions, or?
Council, any question? Mr. President.
Yeah, questions to our attorney. We just did a carport ordinance, will this, will this work with our carport ordinance?
Well, the only change we made that dealt with carports was to say that if it was over 1,000 square feet, it had to come to council, it couldn't be administratively approved. So that's why you're seeing this.
Okay.
If it was less than 1,000 square feet, a planner could have done this administratively.
Okay.
So this, that's why you're seeing this.
But there's nothing about the design?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, one, another question is, what's a typical payback period on a project like this?
Right. A residential is around 10 years, and a commercial will be anywhere from, say, seven to nine years, depending on the cost of energy. If the cost of energy is, say, 14 or 15 cents per kilowatt hour, we're looking at anywhere from seven to nine years as a payback. If it is 10 cents, then it might go to another two years now, so we're talking about 10. So it all depends on what the cost is. But when I started the business, the payback is like 15-plus years. Now it's five years less than four years of my business. So it's getting better and better and better.
Does that mean it's not a share anymore, or?
No, it's not a share. Hopefully, you know, people, it's like any other laptop. Yeah, it's like any other, yes, that's true. Like anything else, like technology, right? I mean, you know, when I bought my first laptop 20 years ago, I paid like $4,000 in New York to get a laptop. Now I can get it for $3.99, right? So that's the reality of life, you know? So the one side adaptability curve is there, hopefully we'll see it more and more. And, I mean, I'm hoping solar panels will be a standard across, replace the shingles, you know? In fact, Dow is working on it too, right? And so putting a carbon footprint shingles, you can have a solar shingle.
You know, this is sort of a technical question like that.
Sure, I'm not that technical, but I let me...
Well, I'm sure you can answer that. There's, when you calculate the amount of energy that this panel, this series of panels will create, it's based on efficiency.
Yeah.
And just being exposed to the weather, the panels get dirty.
Sure.
How do, you know, how do you clean those so that the efficiency stays, stays up?
That's my home, right?
Yes.
I put this project in September of 2010. So as of today, for somebody like me, I can't go up on the roof and clean the panels, they're almost like 60 feet above the, you know, the ground level we're kind of here. So all the natural elements, rain, sunshine, snow, dust, the way the glass surfaces, it's like cleaning itself. There's no maintenance required.
Huh.
And it's not, I won't call it a self-cleaning, but the mother nature is helping the system right now. So now, when I, I'm actually having a few projects in India right now, which are, we are working on. There we have a contract where you have somebody on a monthly basis or something to clean because there's a lot of dust pollution there. So it all depends on where you are, like, if you go down south here in Texas, Mexico, so yes, you have to worry about certain elements. But here, right the way, here we are, I think it's helping us.
Okay.
So at this time, one other thing to, just to add to that, the snow that we went through, right, so you have this thick snow, right? If you have a layers like that thick, yes, it's not generating power. An ambient sunlight, like a cloudy day, a rainy day, still the power is being generated to the panels. So that's the beauty of the technology right now. So in all, it works here in Michigan. And Germany being, having less hours of sun than where we are, we have around 4.2 hours of average sun, 365 days a year, that's our energy levels we have in this state right now. But Germany is like way less than, they're on 3.8 or a bit less, and they are the number one in the world in terms of adopting this technology today. And it's really working. Farmers, businesses, you land in Frankfurt, you see the roofs full of panels, so.
Okay, now, just a couple of other kind of...
Yeah.
The panels themselves are strong enough to handle hailstorms.
Yes, yeah. There's actually a whole spec sheet and study on it in terms of the hailstorm at a 95-mile speed hitting like a wall size, and all those elements are all thoroughly tested. The weather conditions of minus 40 degrees or 185 degree plus, all of those conditions are tested, that's the standard US testing, standard testing conditions. They go through all the process. In fact, in Canton, I think, two years ago, we had a hailstorm in one of the homes, panels were not damaged, but the roof, which is outside, like, as an example, like, outside right away, the panels are not, the roof got damaged with the hailstorm, but ours is intact, right? But the insurance has paid the whole coverage, so we came back, we took the panels, put it in the garage, and we put the panels back, it's like a, on a day or two day support. So it's all part of that package.
And the last comment is?
Yeah.
You know, it's interesting that everybody's talking about going green.
Yeah.
When I was a kid, we were green. And then we got away from it, and now we're trying to rediscover going green, so.
I appreciate that comment, thank you.
Sure.
Mayor's question, not baked another. For instance, on the carport, and I'm all for it.
Sure.
But what do you do, you know, this year we had so much snow.
Sure.
And that's a flat roof, or fairly flat roof, how do you deal with snow?
You're talking about the carport?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you see that says an angle, right? I don't think we have a side picture of this. So it said an angle, right? So because it's a glass, a little heat index actually slices the ice right through, compared to ice on a shingle, right?
Okay.
So if you have a home with a pitch roof, ice having pitch roof versus ice on a glass, with a little heat index, you actually slice the right through first.
Okay, perfect. All right, you have a question? Okay, we will have this on the 14th April.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the optimization event, the Southfield Energy Initiative.
We have a request from consumers, you got it, Terry? From Consumers Energy for easements associated with the roundabouts in front of City Hall. It's the first one, Terry?
Yep.
On the eastern property line, City Hall's here.
Can you move it to the middle?
Yes, I'm going to get the lights.
Eastern lawn here, with the cutout of the roundabout.
Fred, Fred.
Fred, can you move it to the middle?
Consumers Energy has asked for an easement with the cutout of the roundabout that comes a little bit more onto our eastern property line. They currently have, they're currently have a gas line in the right-of-way, but when we extended the roundabout, they want to move the easement outside of the primary concrete of the circle. So this dotted line is the approximate area that they're asking for the easement. The final legal description as of, is being put together, we'll work with Corporation Council for that to be put together, and it's our intent to bring this forward at the April 28 council meeting.
Any questions?
Yeah, Fred, I mentioned this at the time, I'm council president. If in the future, technology changes, engineering changes, and that, and that roundabout disappears, and we have given away the right-of-way, how does that affect, how does that affect us in the future of, of giving us to make changes because we will then have given away our rights away? As opposed to, when we have a vacant, a request for it to vacate a, one of the rightaways for lines and things like that, do you maintain a, your right to go enter into that right-of-way? But it's still there, but, but say, for example, that telephone pole goes away and the lines go away, and they still have that, it doesn't revert back. In other words, in some cases, presently, if you vacate a easement, half goes to each property owner. Okay? But we can do that because we have the right to do that. Here, if we give them right-of-way by contract, then is that in the future limit us from, from any design or approach or anything? Or is it, again, we pay to move it? Would that be the alternative is to move it back, but they still own the right-of-way?
We're not giving them right-of-way.
Are we maintaining the rights to the right-of-way?
You own it, right. This is just giving them an easement to put a piece of pipe in the land.
It's like any easement in the city, but...
We still own the land, if we pay taxes, we would pay taxes on the land. We're only giving them permission to put that gas line within this defined legal area, and the request for the gas line relocation is being prompted so that it's not located under the circle of the road. One of the huge benefits of the $12 million investment that the city's making on Evergreen is all of this infrastructure is being rebuilt. And you see the work right now, men and women are out there every day, working in the right-of-way, bearing these lines, and cleaning up some of these lines that are 40, 50 years old. So that's another residual or, let's say, a primary investment that the marketplace is making spurred by our investment in the new road.
The other question I have is, where does the, where does the oil line go across this right-of-way? It's in the driveway, which is immediately south of this, it goes through the building, within the parcel integration building, but how does it go across? I mean, what, do they move it, or what do they do?
That oil line, that easement for that pipeline will stay where it is at. It comes through, yeah.
It comes up through this way.
Then over, and then to the north of City Hall.
Okay.
So it comes pretty much under our front lawn, so.
That is their easement, correct?
That is their easement for that pipeline.
Mr. President.
Yeah, maybe I'm confused, but you said that, we're not giving away the right-of-way, but we are allowing them to use, we're giving them an easement to put their, their pipeline there. But that, that still, we still can't encroach into that easement without their okay.
That, that's correct. I mean, we, what we could do underground is restricted by their pipeline.
Yeah, so it's almost like giving away the right-of-way.
Right, but we technically still own the land. I mean, it's no different than the pipeline that the oil company has that cuts across our property today.
Yeah.
So, there's certain things we can't do on top of that pipeline.
But this is our initiative.
That's correct.
For us to put the roundabout there.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if we had left the road the way it was, they weren't coming to us saying, I want a new easement to put new pipe in. But it's to facilitate what, what we want to do.
Yeah, I understand that, but it still doesn't make any difference whether we want it or they want it, only one person can use it.
We still have the above ground.
Sure, there would still be, right. I wouldn't say they're, I mean, they're not acquiring the property. There will be a pipe within a certain depth of that property, but the surface is still available, there may be additional room, you know, in that area for, you know, maybe some telecommunication line, so I don't know that it excludes to the extent of, there's a certain sphere of influence for their pipeline. Beyond that, that property is still available to us.
As long as, as, let's say that telecommunications company comes along and wants to use the right-of-way down, down that road. If they go on top of that pipeline that they put in, and then consumers needs to come back and work on that pipeline, then the telecommunications folks have got to move that through so they can get in.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, only one person can use it at a time, without...
Or, or you structure, if you were to give an easement to the telecommunications company that, realizing that there's already an easement for the pipe, that if the, if the pipe needed some maintenance, they would have to move their, their telecommunications to accommodate the maintenance of the pipe.
If you can't put back hole in there.
Right, there'd be hand digging, right, right.
Candidly, I'm shocked at the amount of digging they've been able to do. We have over 14 different lines in that right-of-way right now. But yet you still see, we've seen the back holes in there. I thought there would be more hand digging on this stretch of road just based on the sheer volume of fiber optics that has been laid on both sides of the road.
Okay. It's just, I... Sue, isn't, this is a contract, correct, that the city would draw up?
It's, it's an easement, it's technically a transfer.
But I mean, there'd be a piece of paper.
Correct.
And so to answer Don's concern, couldn't you put a stipulation in the contract or the agreement that should the road be reconfigured, we reserve the right to take our piece back?
Well, the only, and you, you could certainly have those, that discussion with, with the utility company.
I mean, it's highly unlikely.
But again, it's, it's the city that's asking for this reroute.
I get that.
And they may say, well, we're not going to pay to put this new pipeline in, and then you come back in two years and say you, you want to abandon the roundabout, so you want to go back and you want us to move it. I don't know what their reaction to that would be.
Well, you're the lawyer, I, I just asking.
And we could certainly ask them.
We could certainly ask and see what their reaction would be. We could also say that it could be, I mean, they may say, well, we're happy to move it, but it's going to be at your cost, so. I could see that being more of a likely response.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, without any objections, if we move on to the meeting for October 28th, you'll take the next item, which is the operations grant until the evening's stop.
The following item is another request that the city engineering department has had on a, on a city-owned parcel that was acquired. on a, on a city-owned parcel that was acquired a number of years ago by the local finance development authority, and they're proposing to put an easement across, Terry, it's the north end?
Yeah.
Of the north end of the parcel. Here, and this is primarily to service the electrical capacities for the industrial park that is in this area.
Okay, any questions?
Fred, you know, I, I mentioned that there was a power flushing going on, I don't know what the company was doing, flushing shrubs or whatever on 12 Mile Road, and, and they went on the bike path and they, they just chewed up all the easement between the bike path and the curb. And, and so, I guess when I talk about easements and rights-of-way, this is the second time that somebody has come through 12 Mile Road and left it, taking out shrubs and everything else and not replacing anything. Because of course, it's the county right-of-way, and they just did not have any inspection , I assume. But I try to understand, if they had to do work in that, in that right-of-way, there is some problem, do they replace, do they replace what they picked up?
Our standard language in any easement that we give says that they always have to restore the property. So if they're in there initially to construct something, or they're in there in the future to maintain it, we have a clause right in the easement, and the easement's recorded with the county, that says they have to restore the condition to the, to basically to what it was when they first went in there. So if they did maintenance, and they took up some shrubbery, or they, you know, impacted the, the side of the grass, we would, we would have the right to say you have to replace that. Because that's, that's the condition of granting easement.
Is there, their road?
Well, now, county road's different. I thought, I thought the question was...
The easement's on the aisle.
No, I understand, but I thought the question was, right.
I tried to do a comparison.
Right, on, if it was the easement that we granted on our company.
So, okay. So now, we're writing everything else. Who knows the easement that the poles are? Is that the county?
If, if they're DTE poles, the answer's DTE, and right, within the DTE, there's a right for Michigan Bell and certain cable companies to co-locate their...
Do we have to pay for that?
Do we pay for that?
Yeah.
No.
If we wanted to put them all underground, we'd have to pay.
If we wanted to put those underground, we would have to pay for that.
Yeah.
Just wondering why they can do something in one place and can't do it in another, I don't know.
Okay, are you any other questions? Well, I say, without objection, we move it to a meeting for April 28th. The next item is the food truck, but Shelley, you took an hour.
Yeah, many of us enjoyed the food truck rally that we held.
Apples, tomatoes. Just put it on the streets.
Right. So, we've heard from some of our food truck vendors when we were putting together our special event, that there was some issues. So the, we did some research with some of the surrounding communities, the city of Detroit, Royal Oak, Ferndale, and Grand Rapids, and we found that our food truck practices were in line with what the other communities do. And having, we had some discussions with some of the other cities, and most of the cities had recommended that we, we not open up the food truck issue and modify the ordinance. But we, I have learned from the other communities that they've created a special license, or actually, it's more license, a special application for when they have special events that are hosted by the city. And so that's what we're proposing today. We had a committee that was composed of the city clerk, the acting city administrator, city attorney, building official, myself, and community relations, and we, we discussed the, the other ordinances in the surrounding communities, and established a special, special events food truck application, which will help us streamline the process without creating any havoc with our existing residents, our existing businesses. The, we're, we're looking to utilize the same business application that's on the city, city clerk website, asking that the food truck provide general liability insurance for a million dollars, naming the city and other entities involved in the event, provide a state of Michigan special transitory food unit, temporary, temporary food establishment license with some state, provide Oakland County Health Department license. Then whoever is in charge of the special event will put together an internal site layout and seek approval from the police, the fire, and the building department to make sure that, that the grounds are safe, and we will, the, the food truck will submit a hundred dollar fee. And we put that all together in an application, and we would have a checklist. So we think that this is a really nice compromise. We know that this has worked in some of the surrounding communities, and the Ferndale and Royal Oak have a similar type of process, and we think it'll streamline the process.
Any questions?
Tom, thank you so much for following up on the, the weather is getting warmer.
Right.
And I was really pleased to see this on the agenda tonight, so that we're ready when we, whenever the next one's gonna happen.
We've actually been talking to different food trucks. We've had a lot of excitement from last year, and in order to get ready for the East of the Beat concert series that we have in the city center area as well, we have some other people that have requested special events, so we are really excited about it.
So, thank you.
What happened if a, if a, if a vendor, as we normally know it, if we have an event, is it, is it not treated the same way? In other words, we've had vendors here with their trailers, for example, at events. Now, how does, how does, how, is there a difference between the truck and the vendor with the trailer?
I think the state looks at the, those different vendors differently, so a food truck is all contained in a truck, and they supply all of their own power and water and everything is contained.
So does, so does a trailer. Trailer stands by itself, and you have these gas things on the, on the backside, where there is no electricity out in the fields.
You know, they, I, I suppose that would be considered, you know, we would look at that, but, you know, now that I'm thinking about some of the vendors that were here, that the gentleman who had the pizza truck, he did have a, I think it, he had that oven that was detached, it was kind of pulled separate. So I, I guess that would be considered that was...
I was just like, everybody being treated the same?
Sure, sure.
I mean, the principle, what, what we're proposing is that we will use our exist, existing Parks and Rec special events application, and for the next, our council packet, we will put in a copy of that application. It will be a city-sponsored event, and Shelley, what didn't make the packet was the big spreadsheet of all the entities side by side. The council might find the amount of research we did rather interesting, but it was, it was decided the cleanest way to do this was just to use our existing special events. That when it's a city-sponsored event, then we could do it. If there's a, someone who wants to provide a daily sandwich to Central Park, you know, one of our industrial parks, they'll continue to go through the same licensing they always have.
Yeah, let me, let me give you another example. A car, um, a, not a carnival, I guess you'd call it a carnival, right? With the children and all that stuff, yeah. Well, you have it here on the site, and it's sponsored by Parks and Rec. Now, you have one at Northland. They, they set that up, they come and get a free netbook. Now, they, do their vendors pay different? Do they would have to pay differently than, than somebody that was sponsored by us?
They would, they would.
So that would be a burden upon that group to have a, I don't know.
What, what we were trying to accomplish here was that...
No, I know that, but I'm just trying to...
Right, if, if it's, if it's a city event, then we can go through and make sure that there are safeguards put into effect. Whereas if it's on private property, then you almost have to use the ordinance, which is in place right now, that would, that would say for you to use a, a piece of property for a special retail use on a temporary basis, the ordinance prescribes how that can occur, which means you do have to go through various provisions of the building department to make sure that, you know, carnivals, you've got, you have electrical hookup, you've got generators, you've got all those kinds of issues that the building department and the fire department have to make sure all of those safeguards are met.
And is there a fee difference between somebody that's sponsored by the city?
There would, there would be, because, because in that instance, you, there's a notice provision, you have to go and notify within so many seats of the event, and other property owners, and see what their reaction is, and so those fees, and you'll see, if we, if we did that sheet, you'd see that even Royal Oak and Ferndale, some of those, those are fifteen hundred dollars on some of those cities, seventeen fifty, to go through those same provisions that we do here typically, versus if it's our event, and we can do those same safeguards, that we know we don't have to charge the same, same kind of a fee.
And, and just to dovetail on that, we currently do have food trucks that are following the ordinance that is laid out. We have some different office buildings that have made arrangements with private food trucks, and have followed the ordinance as they're supposed to, because it might adversely affect some of the surrounding restaurants. We did not include vendors in our discussion, as you're talking about, and, you know, we could revisit that to include them, you know, when we were thinking about this, it was really specifically for food truck users in our event, because this is kind of the fad that's going on right now. And, you know, Parks and Rec does have a current practice, the application that we did put together is, is modified slightly to adjust some of the, to adjust the, the food issues from the Parks and Rec application.
We, we discussed it at the, at the committee meeting, and I, and I'm just throwing these questions out because since the time when we discussed it, these things came up, and, and I know you did research on what the norm is, so to speak, in relationship to these trucks, so we're, we're in the same pattern, we're saying, we're not different than anybody else, in other words.
Right, right, we're, we're in line with, our fees are in line with everybody, and our purpose is...
I just want to make sure that we are not creating a situation where we don't allow the pri, the private industry to come in and do these kinds of things, and force them to belong to proxy recreation in our particular deal. So, kind of the Caldeans, for example, they'll come up and have a festival, you know, that is...
Of course, a lot of times, we co-sponsor them.
Yeah, they sponsor it.
So then...
Correct.
All right, without any objection, if we move to the April 28th meeting, however, Shelley, then you provide, didn't you stretch the, the council?
Certainly, certainly. So I think she's, it's really lengthy, so, you know, it's...
Okay, as well as the application.
Absolutely, thank you.
We're gonna move to the communication portion of our agenda, the next one, follow the next. First person that has requested to speak is Michael Lindemann.
He's not here.
I mean, he's not here, and the next person is Pamela Gerald.
Three minutes, remember, there was a procedural change.
It was a test, wasn't it?
I passed. Let me know when you're ready. My name is Pamela Gerald, CO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. As your independent voice, I am just a phone call away or a click away via email. On March the third of this year, this honorable body at a COW meeting voted to change the council procedural rule number five to limit our free speech from five minutes to three minutes. The new gang of four, Sylvia Jordan, Don Farcasi, Sidney Lance, and Joan Seymour, did this in an effort to suppress our voice. Remember, people, our voice, our input, and our vote is what matters. My initial reaction was negative, but upon reflection, I thought this was a brilliant idea, and it made sense. It's sort of like Goldilocks and the three bears. Five minutes is too long, one minute is too short, and three minutes is just right. It's hard for any one person to hold an audience for five minutes outside of someone like Orson Welles reading the phone book. I am honored and humbled that this council has taken several of my suggestions lately. Thank you very much. So here's another suggestion. Let's move communications to the top of the agenda, because every public relations expert will tell you that it's a good idea to get the bad information out early and then move on. Unfortunately, General Motors have not learned that lesson as we've seen in recent news accounts. I hope this council will. My name is Pamela Gerald, and I approve this message. And through the chair, Madam Mayor, is it possible that we could talk to LTU about not parking in that cul-de-sac on Monday? Because some of the seniors that come to these meetings could really use parking there, and if they're only gonna be here for a short time, they could utilize that parking lot over there. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, the next person is Gerard Mullin.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is post office box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. At the last council meeting on March 17th, ZR 1321 was placed on hold because the residents of Evergreen Meadows condos complained at that meeting that their legal notice was confusing, and thus, the residents didn't understand what was happening south of their border. Mayor Lawrence chimed in and offered a solution to the confusion, that is, in the future, a cover letter be attached to the legal notice, explaining the legal notice. I believe that this is a bad idea, because an additional piece of paper means an additional tree will be cut down needlessly. And remember, Southfield is known as Tree City, USA. We save trees here in Southfield. We don't kill them. A better solution is to take a page out of the Planning Commission's procedures for legal notices. Historically, the Planning Commission has had a two-tier system for handling legal notices. Tier one is a traditional legal notice for publication in a local newspaper. Thus, it satisfies one of the two legal criteria for notification set by Public Act 110 of 2006. The second tier of legal notice is mailed out as required by PA 110. This notice contains the exact wording as the first legal notice, plus additional information as needed, all on one sheet of paper, not two. For example, it may contain additional information such as an invitation to the recipient to attend a study meeting and voice their opinion on the petitioner's request. The Planning Commission's system is a proven system. It works, and to top it off, it saves trees. If this council changes its policy regarding legal notices, I suggest that this council adopt the Planning Commission's historically proven system, and that you folks here toss the mayor's letter for cover letter into the bin, the recycle bin of bad ideas. Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
All right, the next item, the next person that will be recognized is Mr. Amos Pullen. And this is your time to come to the podium, and you have three minutes to address the council with your wish.
Good afternoon, my name is Amos Pullen. I live at 25859 Moore Road Drive, Southfield. Telephone number is 248...
You don't have to give your number.
Eight, eight oh nine... Eight oh nine thirty-seven eighty-four. I don't know, I can't hear complaint about the water bill. Now, last year, they came out, the water bill was two hundred and some dollars. So I asked myself, why, why my water bill is so high? They said it made up for the money. Okay, ever since then, the water bill been going up. They came out for a new meter. Red brick meter, bigger than one I had on there. And the meter, you can't, don't have, there's nothing going. You can't read it. They put one on the outside, put one on the inside. The one on the inside was huge. Then a few days later, they came out and they put the wrong one on the outside. This year, the water bill going up and up and up. In January, my water bill was two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seven eight cents. I got one other day which I paid two hundred and seventy-three sixty-six. Now I asked my neighbor, I said, how much you pay? Lot of them, they don't pay that money. Now, I've been fighting them people for, ever since last year, and they won't do anything about it. And my water bill steady going up and up.
How many people are in your house? How many people are in your-
Two. I'm retired. I'm seventy-six years old. My wife is seven. Two people in the house. I don't have no lease, no rent.
This morning, what we're gonna do is record your concern to our city administrator, acting city administrator, and he's going to give you some assistance if we can. All right, so you've got your information, and he's going to give you a card and we're going to do what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Can you get your address again?
The address?
Can you get your address again? We need to know our website.
Two five eight five nine Morrow Drive, the M U L R O Y. I'm all right.
Oh, okay.
Southfield, four eight oh three three.
And that was your last name was what?
P U L L.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thanks for your patience.
I really think we should look into that because, you know, I had a situation too. It's just my wife and I. I thought it was a hundred and thirty dollars. And they came and they put dye in the bathrooms and the tank, and nothing was leaking. And we don't water our lawn, and it just keeps getting bigger. And I think this last time was a hundred and forty some dollars. And now, now, since my wife wasn't even here, so I, myself. And so I, they came and put in a meter, and it just didn't do any difference. And I just don't know what's going on, really. I mean, I average a hundred and thirty dollars. I don't have no sprinklers on, I have nothing running. And I don't, and they came out, they putting in the tank and everything, and-
Well, he did, he did too. I talked to-
Went in all the bathrooms, they went in all the bathrooms, in the basement, and putting in the meter, and-
Take the last forty. How much is yours, man?
Well, now, I don't know what my next one's gonna be. The last two were just basic. They were like, whatever the, whatever, uh-
Estimated?
No.
Actual?
It was, well, it must have been, it must have been estimated because it was whatever an abandoned house is, you just the meter charge.
The minimal, the minimal, yeah.
The meter charge. And it was two months in a row. And so I called, and they came out and put a new meter on for me, and I haven't had a bill since then.
So it wasn't reading?
No, it wasn't reading. So they put a new meter on, so I am anticipating catch-up.
Why not call? Why didn't you call?
Why did I call? Because sooner or later, somebody's gonna figure out that.
Right, right.
And then, then I'd get a thousand dollar bill.
Okay, so you'll check into that and then we'll go back to it. Okay, Mayor Lawrence has-
And I have a couple of things whenever I can, and myself as well.
Mayor Lawrence.
I just wanted to get on the way.
I just wanted to let you know, I need to update the council president. I will be bringing forward to you, we have an opportunity of a retirement from our special department, and we will be bringing forward a, I would want authorization from this to do employment contracts. We have an opportunity to hire a qualified officer, and I'll be bringing that forward to you. We will be looking at offering a job offer, which will be circulated to you, so you'll see it as well. And I'll be bringing that forward to you at the next meeting, and I wanted to put your notice in there. Second thing I wanted to bring forward is that the trip to South Korea for us to solidify our sister city relationship with Dr. Charon. The dates have been set for Monday, September twenty-ninth, the new beginning has been writing. And it'll be through October the second. The round trip fare is averaging between fourteen to seventeen hundred dollars. And all of the lodging and food after that point will be provided by the government, which is the same that was done by our city. And we need to solidify that, and I'll pass this around to everyone so they can look at it. They're very excited. We did the exchange of books. They sent some books and children's books here to our library, and we sent some children's books to their library. And so we have started the exchange, and they have been in constant contact, and they're very excited. And we will be actually signing the agreement to be a sister city. And Lawrence test, and the schools are also ready to start talking about doing some educational exchanges between the two learning institutions and doing trips for the K through eight. Not K, but high school students, I'm sorry, high school students, high school students to do at least a week's exchange in the two different cities. So they will come here and be part of our school. We sent some children there. And Lawrence test, who's already looking at, have already made an agreement while they were here on providing some educational opportunities for their students there. So we are, we are really moving forward. They just want us to do the same, if they're expected.
What's the cost to the city?
This will be our own cost because we would not, we would pay for our own tickets. And then, once you get there, the hotel will be provided by the government or Dr. Charon. And they will feed us and give us transportation.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
You talked earlier about bringing, doing a book collection here?
Yes.
And is that still in the plan?
It's happened.
Oh, it's already happened?
Yes. The friends of the library sent the book.
Oh, wonderful, because I was, you, some books are sent.
Okay. Yeah, the friends of the library-
Did this to yourself?
They received it, but when the, when the books were-
They're Harry Potter books.
Yeah. Oh, when the books were sent here from the government, the friends of the library, because they were looking at it, should do with the cost, and they agreed to take on that cost, and they sent books back to their government, and they acknowledged it was very helpful.
Are we traveling outside the United States?
Who?
The city?
Don't get tense.
No, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a policy that we haven't had. Nobody, outside of all Americans, all the United States is the only travel that we've sponsored, to my knowledge.
Well, I'm not aware that we're gonna sponsor this. This will be our own, personal cost. Yeah, we wouldn't be paying for that with taxpayer dollars. It would be our money. And so the trips will be in September through October, so if we plan on going, we can budget our own personal budget, and it will be here to-. The only cost that I would ask the city to think about is our gifts to take to them. They brought us gifts, as you know, and I would like for the city to consider what gifts we would like to take to them for this trip. You still refer to your phone, right? Oh, and then, then lastly, I do wanna say that I had asked the city to look at the ordinance on the Elliott Larson for the civil rights amendment to include sexual orientation. It was referred to the legislative committee. And I had been informed that the legislative committee has presented to the attorney the language that Royal Oak is using, and you did make an evaluation that that language was legal and it was ready to be presented to council.
Right. There were, there were several sample ordinances that we looked at, and we were just waiting for direction. Did council want us to draft the ordinance? One of the things we looked at was, you know, what type of enforcement we could expect if we did pass that ordinance, and just looking at various cities that had those type of ordinances. It seems that most people still, for most of the covered protected classes, still go to the Civil Rights Commission, if it's one of the traditional protected classes. And they haven't seen, like, just a floodgate issue in terms of sexual orientation and so forth. So, right, we were ready to write something if, if the council wants us to write that.
So I'm going to let the chair of the committee report on that, but I wanna see if we, the council needs to have that discussion on that.
Hi. I have two, two items from the legislative committee to bring forward.
Well, why don't we have these two, are you done here? Yes, I'm not. Stay in order here. Oh, just one, one last thing, too. There was an offer to build a shelter across the bus shelter across the street from Southfield Chrysler. Did we get an update from SMART?
Terry, I know you talk, you reach out to SMART.
I'm still waiting to hear back, but I will, I'll follow up again.
Okay. And just these, these solar panels in other communities that doesn't have a part of where they use solar panels on their bus shelters, I don't know why we in the chicken would not use them. If there's any green money with SMART or partnerships, I would be liable to see that.
You have solar panels on your newer ones.
Through the chair, the one on Central Park Boulevard, this is a prototype. We did add a solar panel, and we are having lighting. But ours aren't as sophisticated or as costly as the gentleman who presented, and they need to be cleaned and updated. So we're doing this on a trial basis.
Oh, I didn't even know we were doing it.
Yes. We did install one, and I will, I'll follow up on tomorrow on the other bus shelter issue.
We're due to bring SMART in. SMART will be the guest speaker at Miles County City Managers, and I'll bring it up to them again. But we typically get three to five shelters every other year. So we need to press that.
And as I say on those shelters, when we put those shelters in, we made a commitment to clean them because you've seen some cities where they have bus shelters, and they are awful. They're dirty, they're muddy, and they're not anything. And I think we've been doing a good job. And that's part of our curbscale, and that's something that I really push. And I'm proud of the cities, they're doing a good job.
First, I wanted to point out, now directed to Fred. The brand-new pavement on Nine Mile is now up in places, just, just east of Southfield Road. There, I mean, that was just late, month ago, and there are potholes in front of the-
What's CC?
Well, across from the IBM building on the south side of the street.
Very.
And also on Telegraph, which is a little older, just north of Nine Mile, in front of Bank America or in that stretch. It's just wrong to be the-
There's another one right at Swanson.
Yep. Big one.
And Telegraph, huh?
Telegraph, yeah. I would imagine that on Nine Mile, we have some kind of warranty for that.
Then, one, we've not accepted that job. It is not complete.
Okay.
On May fifth, we, it's administration's position that we're going to bring both OHM and HRCN to talk about these MDOT jobs and the question of warranties. We're gonna talk about what MDOT refers to as their value-added engineering. But Nine Mile would not accept the job because we knew last fall, when it was finished, that there were some wearing issues, and there were certain stress points. And you're touching right on some of the spots that were previously noted. But the objective on May fifth is so with the number of capital projects we have going on, so that everyone in our council knows how these MDOT agreements work. I will tell you, when I first learned that MDOT does not get warranties, I was appalled. And when you go through some of these things, parts of it makes sense, but it's something that causes, it causes me some heartburn. But no, this on Nine Mile, we've not accepted that job. And this is, and I will tell you, Easter Road, which was done a few years ago, we're just now finally closing that out. But the closeout on these jobs because there's no warranties, we don't immediately accept them. But I want both engineering firms to come in, there will be a fifteen, twenty minute presentation on the provisions of these MDOT contracts, and I hate saying it, we're pretty much along for the ride because they're picking up ninety percent of the tab.
Well, this was discussed this morning on the Craig Follies Show as well, the whole thing of warranties. And the state is now talking about five-year warranty. They were interviewing the Senate Chairman of Republican Senate. But the other thing I would say about Nine Mile, you know, when pavement is new, it kind of has a very smooth look. The thing I've noticed, now, yeah, we had a rough winter, but it, it looks, the top layer of Nine Mile, looks like it's been down a few years. It, it, you know, it's going to crumble.
It's got a different pinning.
Yeah, exactly. Pinning is the word.
But Nine Mile wasn't, according to what I heard from, from public works, is that it was put down cold. And-
It wasn't put down cold. I mean, I drove it. I was there.
Well, they've checked that out, and the temperature of the material that they put down to, to-
Okay.
Well, I mean, you're pressing the-
And that is part of this warranty issue. There were spots and where, and I, you could see where the surface has, it's not as smooth glass-like, but it has a pit. And you could tell, when you look at the reports on the temperature in the asphalt. Now, we were, we started a very early fall where we had cooler temperatures, and that's where we seem to have the most wearing. And even the color is slightly different in the IBM area. And I've driven it a couple of times on Saturdays, very slow, got out a week ago Saturday at Rutland. And you could see parts of it, when you're looking at it, it doesn't, and that is to be remedied in this warranty period. But Mr. Farcasi has seen some of the preliminary numbers where the temperatures that it was put down in weren't within the parameters that are in these, in this value engineering. And it shouldn't have gone down. And that's another conversation we're having with our engineers.
Well, Civic Center Drive, see, the Civic Center Drive is splitting too.
On the seams.
Yeah.
No, right, next to the seam.
Okay.
Obviously, very frustrating to us. We don't have the money. And then you, when you do do a job, and then you start to see immediately, and we've all taken heat on the road issue. The, continuing with the, I have three things on roads. Fred, you said that it looked like two thousand and seventeen, the Service Drive for Northwestern. Does that go all the way to eight mile? You said from Berg to, I-
Berg to Evergreen is that stretch.
You know, eight to nine, it's gravel.
Northbound?
Yeah.
That is next year. Northbound, Northwestern, eight to nine is scheduled for next year. And that got moved up a year because of some maneuvering. You know, I'll tell you, Lee Schultz did a good job in moving some, getting the road commission to move some projects up, and she got that moved up from seven, I'm sorry, from sixteen to twenty fifteen.
We gave them a million dollars. It's not even our road.
Exactly.
You're talking greenfield. You're talking greenfield now.
Yeah, greenfield.
Yep. All right. So, the third thing. Um, I was contacted today by a resident who was, um, speaking for other residents on Farm Brook. Uh, they've always had a dirt road. Uh, and they liked the dirt road because people didn't cut through. They, um, uh, also, it felt like a country road, whatever. Uh, they showed me, uh, I didn't get up to drive up there, but they showed me pictures, um, of the ruts on Farm Brook. And they're ready to get their road paved. And I spoke to, uh, the attorney today about this. And, uh, I, I know, I went through it in the seventies because Hollywood Street in my neighborhood was dirt at the time. And we did get sixty percent of the residents. But, the process has to start with council. Uh, it doesn't commit, uh, and it would be a special assessment for the residents. Um, so, uh, and Sue can, you know, jump in. But, um, as I understand it, uh, and I remember in the seventies coming to council and saying, you know, we're, we'd like to see Hollywood paved. And then Holly, and then the council directed the administration to get the ball rolling so that the residents, if they do decide this, and to assess themselves, then they know what they're in for. So, I'm, I'm not here tonight to advocate that Farm Brook be paved, but I would like to start, uh, and as one council person, I can't direct this, but I would like to start the ball rolling to, to give the residents of Farm Brook the information so that they can decide whether sixty percent of them want, uh, to get their street paved. They, they say, and, and the city's been out, I understand, and, and gravelled it. And it's, the, the ruts are terrible. Uh, and people have gotten stuck. Um, and there's no snow on the road.
Okay. So, why don't we do that?
If, if it's referred back to administration, and basically it would be brought back to council, there are standard resolutions, one and two, where the council would determine whether it's, it's a public necessity to do this. And then, it, you, you would, there's all kinds of notice to the residents, Public Works, at three and four. And the cost would be spread. And they would be able to come in and they could petition against it if they wanted. But initially, it could start either with them bringing the petitions in or council could initiate it. And then we'd see what the reaction of the, of the residents are.
That's always, you know, do they initiate?
You could. And I don't know whether they're organized enough to, to bring it in. We could start it and then see what their reaction is.
We'll, we'll get it, get it, so.
I talked to a lady that called me on, on Farm Brook invasion to get it graded. They did not want it, they, they wanted it kept in farm, farm ways. So, you're going to get to-
Well, you already guessed that.
Right.
I mean, there are people that want Hollywood.
I know that. But, I was on the council when Hollywood was happening. Why Hollywood was kept out of that district is the people came and petitioned against it. They said it would bring too much traffic. And so, we, we talked, we-
And I moved into the neighborhood to change it.
And we took, and we took that, out of that, that district. And, and, uh, then later on, they decided everybody else is going to look nice. And then they came in and, all they done is they paid a bundle because it would be cheaper if they'd, uh, got it when it was. And, and, uh, because they filled the chambers, council backed off.
Well, the resident that I spoke to said, uh, people are talking about getting a road paved, but they have, uh, it's more likely, uh, they can make a better decision if they knew what was in the ballpark as a special assessment. So, what, the message I'm relaying is that this resident said, I don't know if everybody will go for it or not, but can you help us get some information? So, that's when I called Sue. Uh, and so, I'm asking that the administration be directed.
Well, let's see if we can get consensus. Because, you know, I just happened to drive down Farm Brook last week from the entrance. And I could not agree.
So, my question is, what did it take to, to get those holes filled?
And I was, I, and I was told it had to do with weather. I, I was-
Well, I was told it had to do with the aggregate. It was too fine. And it was just going right out to the edge of the road.
Why don't we take a consensus to see if council wants to initiate, um-
NSAD.
NSAD. So, we'll start with you, Mr. Cyrus.
Yeah.
Mr. Mark.
Yes.
Mr. Crager.
Sure.
Mr. Mark.
To me, if the people bring a petition, sixty percent or more, I'll go for it. But, uh, this is going to be a downy book because there's a certain amount of people, folks in old times, that want that thing, you know.
They just want the number.
But, I, I will give them an opportunity. I'll never deny them an opportunity, but I always say-
They need, they need number.
I got calls too. And they just want it graded. They just want it graded. And I see they can't do it in this weather that we had, where you have so frost in the ground that doesn't do any good. Top moves and then next two, three people go through, you got the holes again.
Who's the president of homeowners? Is there still a president?
Uh, I believe so. I don't know how active the association is.
Well, I'll take a moment. On, uh, Wednesday, the Finance Committee, we're looking at library bond financing, refinancing, uh, re, refinancing of an existing road bond. We're going to do the preliminary presentation of the audit. I've got OHM coming in to start a presentation on roads. Uh, we're putting together a few more pieces on roads, the history of what's happened to act fifty-one funding, our local bridge, the one mil. And then, just this, uh, morning, I've asked the Finance Office to start putting, uh, almost side-by-side local and major street budgets so we can begin to better tell our story. That's not going to be ready by Wednesday. There is one other piece, though, that OHM, we figure we've got basically four types of roads in, in Southfield. Roads that are concrete residential, um, those that are asphalt, uh, some with curve, some without, and those that are, have never been paved. Some of those have edge drain in that. And what we've asked OHM to do is give us a cross-section on a per linear foot of what it costs. If you're on a gravel road and you just want to crown the road and have asphalt three, four inches, what is the per linear foot cost of that?
That's what they're in.
So, to, for, so that any homeowner's group will have a basic cut aside, PowerPoint slide, and a per linear foot cost for every homeowner, assuming you've got streets that are developed on both sides. New concrete residential development, when I was in the private sector, we used infrastructure cost for each linear foot of frontage at four hundred dollars a linear foot. You couple that with some of the generous sized lots we have here, people think differently. However, that asphalt, no concrete curve, no edge drain is probably the, the least expensive road. Let's get that cost information out there. So, when these SAD district requests come in, we can very, very quickly figure out the linear footage and what people would be looking at. Um, I think SAD districts are going to become a discussion. We have to have a lot more as we wrestle with this, our local streets. Um, so, I want to, that's the global, what's happening on, on streets. You know, we're going to begin on Wednesday. And I know there are more pieces that I need to have the engineering consultant put together. I want to have something that's cost-effective for us, what people bring these requests in, so that we're not paying thousands of dollars for engineering firms to give us cost estimates. It's a swag to get a conversation going.
Um, I will email you with the contact information for the person.
And tomorrow, after I deal with Mr. Poland, I'm going to be over at Public Works. I will drive, Larry and I will drive Farm Brook and see what we can do to take care of the ruts as soon as possible.
Well, we're going to have to put down gravel and then spread the gravel until it can get the frost entirely out of the-
The ground.
Out of the ground. The frost is not out of the ground yet. And so, you know, I, I feel, um, they take Eight Mile, it's all the way to the end. I don't know how those people lived with that. I mean, all the way to whatever it was. Uh, I think Pontiac Trail, everybody's getting off of Pontiac Trail when they get miles. I would be on that. And I found my car, it just went back down in holes. I mean, it was just terrible. But, uh, but we, we, my son David lived on Pebble Brook. Uh, maybe it's a gravel road. And they, the only way they could do it, he said, we have to put gravel down. When the frost comes out, we put gravel down and we'll spread gravel. And it held up for a while. But, uh, if you put it in now, the frost comes up and it, and it, and it gets wet. And then the gravel goes and then you sink in the gravel. Because, because it, and it's smooth, it, it's a false bottom. And then, when it melts, then you go over the current and then you fall into the gravel and the ruts.
Well, it's reported to me that people have got, just slid right off the road, uh, because of, of, uh, a mound.
Even going off the road over here. They're jumping the curb right in front of us.
Is that it, Mr. Mark?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mark?
Okay. So, I wanted to report two things out to council from the legislative committee. We met on March the third. Uh, one of them, as the mayor said, uh, was a proposed amendment from our, our internal policies, uh, to the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act. And I'll, I'll give a little bit of background on it. They don't, you know, it's not a presentation whatsoever. Uh, but the Michigan Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act is from nineteen seventy-six. Rep. Elliott and Rep. Larson, uh, proposed it. It was signed into law. Uh, so, it prohibits discrimination in the state of Michigan in employment, housing, and public accommodation based on religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, height, weight, familial status, and marital status. Uh, it does not include sexual orientation. It's a part of what somebody in Michigan could not be discriminated against in terms of employment and housing and public accommodation. So, the state legislature is not moving to amend that statewide. So, since nineteen seventy-six, thirty cities plus throughout the state of Michigan have added sexual orientation to protect gay residents in their city, uh, for these reasons. Uh, as recently as last year, Royal Oak added its name to the list. Detroit is on the list. Grand Rapids is on the list. Kalamazoo is on the list. And two weeks ago, Laker Village added their name to the list. Um, I'm going to pass out this article because we, we, there's a, a social issue, I think, that merits, uh, consideration in terms of where our progressive values are. But, in terms of us being the economic hub in metro Detroit, in Michigan, there's an, in Southfield, there's an economic benefit to this. This article is just from last week. It's a coincidence that we were going to bring it to this meeting. Says Michigan CEO is banning employment discrimination against gay people as a way to improve the economy. Uh, so, it talks about, uh, the CEO Doug Rothwell of Business Leaders for Michigan, President and CEO. Um, he's citing a study that the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, uh, last year released that found that Michigan's economy would benefit from an anti-discrimination law that includes protections for lesbians, gay, bisexual, and transgender residents. The study found that the current state of discrimination compels some professionals and college graduates to leave Michigan in favor of more welcoming states. It also impacts businesses' competitive advantage in recruiting and retaining a skilled workforce, ability to attract a diverse customer base, and employee productivity and morale, according to the report. I think it actually, again, just ties into what we talked about earlier. Uh, this Lawrence Tech population of young professionals. And this is, this isn't just about attracting young gay people to move to Southfield. This is attracting young progressive professionals. That this is in their value set. Um, it wasn't in nineteen seventy-six. I bet if it was proposed today, it would be, uh, in, in an anti-discrimination policy in the state. But, it, the article continues, while Democrats have proposed adding these protections, nothing has passed in the Republican-controlled legislature. Governor Rick Snyder and House Republicans said they're open to amending the law, but Snyder doesn't plan to leave the charge. Uh, I want to be, I want to put it right on the front that, you know, this is not about marriage. This is not about a hot button issue. It even says this right here in the article. Um, we can have differing opinions on marriage. Uh, but the, the CEO Doug Rothwell says, that's more of a social co, issue, social contract issue. It's not our place. But, we do feel as employers, we think it's important not to discriminate. And that's why we have it in the plan. So, the, the, on March the third, uh, the legislative committee met. We would like to see this bring, be brought before full council for consideration. Um, we have, uh, I think, a draft of Laker Villages. Uh, we have a draft of Royal Oaks. We can tailor-make it to fit the needs of Southfield. Uh, I, I don't know if Sue wants to talk about the, the impact on our, our legal department. I don't, you know, instead of admitts fuel to minimal.
Yeah. The enforcement appears in the cities that have, you know, the type of ordinances that we discuss at the committee. The enforcement was not, uh, it was something that I think that we couldn't handle. It was, it was pretty minimal in terms of-
That's the same language that was the Title VI.
No.
What?
No, I don't think sexual orientation is-
No, no, it was not saying, that's what I'm saying.
Right, it was not. Yeah, yeah.
Title VI is the federal-
Right.
These that we had just authorized the other, that's what-
And to add on to that, uh, it's before, it's before, it's before Congress, too, to do that. And they're not acting.
Why don't we, why don't we just, at this point, uh, let's take a consensus if we want a city attorney to draft an ordinance for us to hold on. So, we'll take a consensus. And we'll start with you, Mr. Cyrus.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mark, Mr. Crager.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I mean, I agree that we should not have discrimination. I think it should be handled by the state. So, I, I'm afraid about the city's getting, I, I'd have to say no. The state should handle it.
Um, Mr. Pratasi.
No, we just approved federal Title VI and the language in that. Instead, we could not change it in any way. The everything right is the federal government changing Title VI, which is discrimination, civil rights, uh, real estate law. And, and it goes beyond just a local action. It, you know, the, the real estate, you know, I, I'm subject to civil rights and, and federal government, housing, discrimination. And, and, I mean, why don't they change it and then we, like everything else, they change? I mean, you know, I, I, I'll look at it. But, I'm just saying is that, you know, each little city does it. So, so what happens? You're not really changing the law. You're just, one city, so what does that make a difference, uh, to anybody else? Are you going to stand alone? I don't know. They're arguing either way. I'm just saying, I, I mean, there's discrimination and I guarantee you that. But, I just think that actually here, we've got so many local things to handle. The federal government and the state should really take care of the job that they're there to do. And, and you should come to us and say, man, the Title VI's came through us.
I'm, I'm going to say no as well because the, the fact is a thing that's not moving forward to change for the real estate.
Well, it sounds like Mr. Pratasi said yes.
You saying yes or no?
What?
Said considering.
No, I did, I said, I said, there is discrimination. But, I just don't think locally, with all the problems we have, it doesn't make a significant difference in what kind of resolution you pass. So, that you're with, you got thirty cities out of how many?
Well-
I mean, is that going to, I mean, are you lobbying or are you, are you asking, you know, I mean, your lobbyists to tell the state to go ahead and change it?
Uh, so-
But, a resolution is not going to get you there. So, locally, you have a resolution. And, and where would that get you?
Well, can I just say, I think it's worth a discussion.
And because of political thing.
Well-
I put it on the table. And, and I just think that those individuals responsible for governing, how to tackle this thing, and, and we abide by the laws of the federal government and the state like we do everything else.
I think it's worth-
It's no different, it's no different than what I have to abide by, under, under my real estate life.
No. So, to clarify, Mr. Pratasi, we're asking, I'm asking you, do you want a consensus for the attorney to draft a, or just?
To be honest with you, I don't even, I don't even know the, the, what it states regarding law. I mean, I've never seen it. Jeremy, I'm just telling you, bring it forward. I know that legislative committee, there's a lot of legislation out there that we need, you know, that are killing us. And that's all you guys did is come up with that? You know, I mean, I-
I don't, I don't know. You know, I, I don't want to minimize what we've done in the legislative committee on this.
But, I can't say yes or no until I see what is on the table to look at.
Well, then we need to, we need to have the discussion for the discussion.
That's, well, let me clarify what I-
You have to take all the, all the legislation, look at the differences of what you have in front of you. And then, what are you trying to see?
I'm having a study session.
You know, yeah, I don't, I don't-
All right, you're forward.
Okay. That, that's, I, I'm just asking for the consideration. You can vet it. You can, you can critique it. You can vote how you want in a future study session.
In her time, uh, the attorney's time, going out and investigating all these different cities.
It's already been done.
What?
She, and she didn't do investigations. She talked to fellow attorneys in different cities.
You have to, you have to-
But, she's already done, she's already done the work. It's already been done. But she's already done, she's already done the work, it's already been done.
I don't know, does the city of seven, council of seven direct the city attorney anymore? Or legislation, committee goes and directs the city?
That's a, that's a routine tonight, God.
Nothing's been written.
I'm asking for a consensus as to if we want to move forward with direction of the city attorney, but we've got agreed, yes, to no, and we can say, yes, we know it's, it's, uh.
I look at it, I, I mean, but I mean, I just don't think that it's our place to even look at it.
I under, I understand your argument.
I do it to appease you.
I, well, I, I appreciate that.
And I'll appease you, and I'll look at what you come forward to, all right?
I appreciate that.
But I'm saying is, we just passed Title VI, it does, it does not include the language that you're asking for. So, why are we doing something that the federal government hasn't included? And not only that, the Attorney General of, of the United States is different than, than what the state of Michigan is doing. I mean, you've got things going all over the place, and, and, you know, somebody's gotta take the lead one way or the other. And I, I'm not debating it, I'm just trying to say it doesn't make sense, with all these different entities getting involved in something, when, when the leadership is, Congress should certainly ought to take that lead, and the Senate here, and the reps should take the lead, so that we, all the cities can abide by the same laws. We got Title VI.
We're in agreement on that, I agree with you.
Title VI, Title VI was in front of it, I'd like to amend that, I'd like to change even the typos. And it said, you cannot touch it, it said you cannot touch it, you have to sign it the way it is.
We're in agreement with that, uh, and, and I, just, give me, I'll go on to the next point.
I'm going on there, I'm, that's too much.
Draw a, draw a proposed ordinance.
Proposed ordinance for us to look at and then bring it back at a later date outside that conference.
All right, second item from the legislative committee was something that we had brought up last fall. I brought up again, uh, a couple of meetings ago, was the reexamination, again, directed no staff to do anything, the reexamination of the bidding process, and potentially looking at giving either special consideration when we bid for services, for vendors, um, and for products to Southfield-based and Southfield-owned businesses to boost local economy. Uh, nothing has been brought back. Uh, I, I asked, you know, council president to direct, uh, the city administration, uh, and, and it was directed to the city administration to bring it back, just looking for an update, and can we set a, set a date specific to bring something back for consideration, bring it to a committee, bring it to full council?
There was a discussion several years ago, I remember, and it was, it was like Southfield's face. And, you know, you're getting out of there.
Right, we, we have had those discussions in the past, we have actually researched still, uh, within our office, and, and, you know, there have been different proposals over the years. Um, one of the ones that I recall was, if, if, uh, there were, you know, say four bidders, one was a Southfield bidder, let's say the low bidder was at a certain amount, the Southfield business was, was with so many percentage of the low bid, then the Southfield business would have the right to match that. So, that was one option. But I think all the discussions, as I recall, and I think that, that Jav worked on, was there, there was at least a, a, a recognition that you'll either pay more potentially, because, you know, if, if, if for some reason now people get to change their bid, or people won't bid, because they know they could be the low bid, and maybe a Southfield bidder would then be able to take the work. So, I, I think that's why they never went anywhere, but I would say that a lot of the, the work was done. I mean, some cities do have these preferences. I mean, it's not unusual, it's not atypical, but just historically, what we've done here, we have not, we looked at it, but we've never gotten into where we, where we actually did it, so.
So, the research has already been done?
It has been done, I mean, we, we, if, if there was discussion.
But I don't want to, you know, we're, but we're discriminating against business people. I mean, everybody has a right to bid under the same rules. You know, what if every city had the same rules? And if you had, you know, Laker Village, they had two contractors, they'd get the jobs.
Well, and I think, again, that's, that's why it, they, they never came to some fruition with this preference.
I'd ask, uh, I've heard a student who's, who's out, um, um, should, should be back by the end of this week for medical, uh, reasons, uh, to do some, how many bids the last couple of years, how many have that Southfield company? I, I think part of that one approach is from how many Southfield companies are bidding for the type of thing.
Oh, fine.
And, and that piece needs to be part of it, and I, as soon as she's back, I'll ask her to make it top priority. We're, we're functioning, just from a bidding standpoint, what needs to be done, and, you know, only, so.
Now, I, and I told Jeremy this, I recall the conversation before, and the consensus then was that we didn't wanna do this. However, one of the things that we talked about, and I really don't know, uh, if it's happening, is a Southfield business registry. I think the intent here is to support local businesses, our taxpayers, that I'm all for. Um, as far as preferential treatment, that's a slippery slope, so, um, but are we, uh, whatever we're going out for, paper towel, or blacktop, uh, whatever we're buying, are we making sure that we are contacting local businesses to, to let them even know that we're shopping? And I don't know that that happens here. I mean, I know things are put, ads are put out generally, but, you know, we did talk about, especially today with email, uh, having a registry, just shooting out a thing that says, hey, we're, we're going out for bid for this.
Yeah, but let me just say that. We, we do put all of our bids on the state bidding system, and I need to check the frequency. I know within the last two years, our business development, all this, along with Oakland County, has done, uh, a bidder's education as to how people can access the state bidding system, the Oakland County's purchasing, so we're doing certain education pieces. We're also with a number of our larger manufacturers, doing a push that at some point, I would say in the next six months, is part of a government procurement program, where Denzo Lear will be having a day program where they reach out to businesses in Southfield and Oakland County as to how they could do businesses with these larger Fortune One Hundred companies. But I, I'll come back and ask Ms. Freeman to give you the frequency. I know there's been one in the last two years, but we could step that up where there's one happening every year, and our purchasing department is part of that.
Can I say something? Let me tell you, but what you have, what you have is the same as you have big businesses and small businesses. You get Xerox, they can come in and give away the machine. A little guy can't afford that, they make all the money on the ink, and, and the little guy can't even get in the door. I mean, so, so you have that disparity between small business and big business. And, 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 you know, you, small business employs people, and, and they're being knocked out of the ballpark because they can't afford to compete. And, and so, the same way, yet, when you broaden the scope, when you broaden the scope of, of the bidding thing, it's the same way. Uh, you're still not gonna get the person that you're gearing for, if a big guy wants to get to bid. And it just, I mean, that's the way they do business, I mean, Xerox for one, I mean, they give their machine away, you can have it, they make their money on ink, you can't get it anywhere else. You wanna get the ink, twenty-four hours, three days, maybe we'll give you the ink. And that, that's the way it really works, but, so it's pure, the purer that you can make, the bidding, the better off you are. And that is, the more people that bid, the better the bid, and the taxpayer saves money. Because you're giving them the best deal. And, and, and I don't know any other way, other than be sensitive to the local buyer, but, but we have people who sell insurance in the city, and they come here to the city and say, how come I go sell you insurance? Well, they can't compete. You know, how about a hospital? They, anything, they pick the topic, and, and, you don't have to. And, so I just think, our job is to broaden, to broaden the, the, the way we do business, spread it out as many people as you can, take the best bid, if people are not, uh, able to do the job, you can go to the second bidder, you have that right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and even if that, if you have two businesses that came in even, one was a local and one wasn't, you could go to the local, there's nothing illegal about that.
I, I see it in two different ways, and I would like a point system, because when we do our bid process, we do get certain points for different things. And even if we look at a service contract, and that's different from, uh, a gadget or a machinery, and, and, in this service contract, I, I'm almost certain there's a point system for, you know, have you had comparable experience with a city our size?
Mm-hmm.
You know, what has been, some of them are your evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that there should be a point advantage if you're a local city, 'cause you're here paying taxes. And I do believe that we have a certain amount of responsibility to take care of those who, who pay taxes in the city. The other thing about it is, I would like this city to become stronger when it comes to tax abatement, when it comes to Brownfield, that if you do that, you are mandated to, like, have a career fair with local schools. You're required to, um, provide internships to our local schools, and I'm not even gonna get into the public private. But children, you know, it, it creates this sense of, this city takes care of its own. And if we're giving you a tax rate, the least you can do is provide internships in the summer to Southfield folks, 'cause they provide internships. And I think we should be stronger, I think we're too lax, we are very easy, and I support tax abatement. So, what do we get in support of that? And those are areas that I think that we should, should look, and I don't see anything wrong with that. You know, if you, we give you a tax abatement, then if you're gonna give summer internships, then we want you to shop, you know, in our local schools, if you're doing it in high school. Then if you're going to do, um, if you get the Brownfield tax abatement or whatever we're doing, that, um, you hold a career fair within opening up the Southfield, saying, employees of city of Southfield, you know, we are gonna be hiring, and we're gonna do a job fair, or we can say, once a year, we're gonna have a job fair for all these companies that have tax abatement, whatever. And you hold a job fair and invite our Southfield residents. You know, something like that, I think that we should be stronger in that, because, you know, it, it, it comes to a point where we have to, our unemployment is high in the city of Southfield. And what are we doing about it? I mean, this is something. Hmm? I know. And so, this is a clear opportunity, and we need to be strong with that. Because if we, if our unemployment continues at the rate it is, it's, it's acting up. That's foreclosure, that's other things, you know, property, uh, not being taken care of. And so, we need to really, that's an area, you know, and I know we're, I'm kinda putting a different plan on it, but I think this is a great time for us to really stand up and say, you know, as a government, this is our way of attacking unemployment in our cities, this is a way for us to, to train. You know, if you, you got a little factory over there, we gave this little factory that was making some kinda springs or something, that's a skilled trade job. You know, let's offer that to, when you're hiring, offer that, or offer a scholarship to someone to go through the, uh, to get their skilled trade in, for instance.
All right, so we've got two issues that I think we need to address, uh, maybe address in the later days, which we can afford, which we can back to.
Sounds good, that's all, you know, I was just gonna say, well, I was, I was just gonna say, I wasn't here for the discussion that obviously everybody had on this particular issue, I wasn't elected to council yet. And I think it is a workout between the seven of us to figure out, how can we collaborate, put our brains together to get Southfield's local economy moving again? We do it every day, obviously, as council members, but if it takes a little bit more elbow grease, I love the idea of figuring out what can we do outside the box. It doesn't have to be codifying a policy that apparently everybody else discussed before I was elected, um, and didn't agree with, but we can come up with something more creative. So, that, that is officially all it.
Thank you, Mr. Creach.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, um, I know that we, uh, first of all, is the Farm Brook Road. Uh, I didn't get involved in that conversation, 'cause I think it raised my hand in time. When you talk about crowding the road and putting a, a cap on it with asphalt, I think we're disaster for trouble, because if, if the base is not there, all we're doing is creating another headache for ourselves down the road, so if the, if the road is gonna be redone, it's gonna be paved, I think the residents need to know that it's gotta be all the way from the, the base, has to have a new base put in it and, and paved, it just, we just can't cap it, 'cause, uh, that's just not gonna work. Uh, so that's, that's it. The other, the other thing is, you know, we've been talking head to head, so I'm gonna lighten it up a little bit. We've been criticized by people about our roads, and potholes and everything else. This happened to be in the, in the paper, in the cartoon section today. It's all over the place, it's not just, it's not just in Southfield. And this, you know, I don't know where the, where the cartoonist is that draws this cartoon, but, uh, it's, uh, the text of the thing is that, uh, the guy went out to, to a store and he ran into some, and they're named, and apparently the potholes are so frequent that they named it, given the potholes names, so, uh, so that's, it's, it's all over the place, so I know that we get criticized for the potholes that we have in, in Southfield, but, uh, we shouldn't go home and, and, and beat ourselves up any more than we absolutely have to, because it's, it's bigger than Southfield. And that's it for me.
And I think we can even, uh, I don't think we need to continue to drive the potholes to the ground. There are great things happening. I'm not saying you, but I'm just saying.
No, I don't even wanna bring it up anymore, but it keeps visiting us, it's like a, it's like a bad meal, it keeps coming up.
Yeah, in, in our packet, uh, there was a, uh, information packet on flann mapping dot com. And, and, uh, I'd sure like to know about this before we get into this item, because, you know, they have a similar kinda thing, uh, down in Florida, and people, that becomes the topic of conversation. And people say, well, I'm not gonna move there, I'm not gonna live there, you know, and it's not a preventative thing to me, it's discouraging people, but what happens if you take one, one area and you have twenty dots? Do you think you can sell a house there? I mean, this is, I mean, I believe in transparency, I mean, give everybody who, that wishes a, a, you know, uh, a report, you know, that wishes it, but, but to start mad at things, I think you're just emphasizing, you know, a situation, that's my opinion, and, like I said, you know, they even, they even have a, a, a thing that tells you that troopers are gonna be on one street this weekend, down there. And, you know, and, and that's what they do, and everybody stays off that street. And so, you know, knowledge is a great thing, but you have to see what results you get from knowing something, and if it's a negative or a positive. And finding crime and coming up with the statistics that we have is a positive. Now, if you start dotting, having a map, you know, of where incidents happen, you may have this arrest in one, one neighborhood, you know, there's one guy that's hitting the whole neighborhood, so you're gonna have a bunch of dots. So, you're just gonna frighten the heck out of the seniors that are in there, and, and, and I tell you, this is, I, I believe it from public relations, uh, and, and from, uh, isolating where it, it happened, and mapping it, and what doing.
Pardon? I, I.
There are people that want this.
What?
There, there, there are people who want this.
Well, mapped?
They want the information.
Tell them somewhere house quick, then.
They, they wanna know if, um, what's going on in the neighborhoods, so they're alert to it. Um, you know, a lot of the neighborhoods get a report now from the police department before this. Um, I've seen them in neighborhood newsletters, um, of recent crime in the, in the neighborhoods. Uh, you, you can request that through the community policing officers.
Yeah, but you're mapping it, just like to do a map, you're dialing your eyes.
I understand, I understand. You know, in, in Phoenix, Don, they have a community section of the Arizona Republic, and they list every week, by zip code, every single crime. They don't list the address, they list the block number. So it's, this would be the 2600 block or something. But a, a lot of communities do that. I, I think after a while it becomes, you know, you, you see that crime is everywhere.
Listen, when you're at first tier community, you start believing as you're asking for trouble.
Apparently you guys aren't reading the Oakland Press, and, and the sun.
Yeah.
It's, it's all in there.
It's all in there, but it's not mapped. That's what I'm saying. You're gonna have dots. You go to mapping dot com, mapping dot com, and, and I don't wanna say the area, or that I know that you're gonna get a ton of jobs, but it would sure make a difference for you to shop.
Yeah, the president today has suggested that we bring our police chief in and have him do a presentation on this, and if there's a policy direction change, we'll-
They called, and I told them what I'm telling them right now, but it was already done. It was already done.
Let's have our chief come in, and let's have a discussion.
Do you have it on there, CJ?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now. I saw it, it was, there was a story in the Oakland Press about it. It's all, it's about awareness, it's about seeing trends in your own neighborhood, being vigilant. I never thought about it from your perspective, to be honest with you, and I think you have a valid point, but I'm trying to pull it up, but.
Okay, so we'll bring our chief in, and if we do need to, make him just listen to see why this was implemented.
I need to know what it does, and I need to focus on the areas.
Well, when I spoke to the, the gentleman that called, I asked him the same question. Why do we need to have this brought forward? And he said it makes people armed in terms of what's happening, and they're more aware-
You know, but, but, but let me, but let me just say this. There was, the data that the police department gets, and I've heard it with discussion some time ago, is, is like, for example, if their data shows on their papers, dots in a certain area, you know, they go in that area and they do things, and they kinda make apprehensions. You know, I, I, you know, I think, I, I, 'cause I, I recall anyway, like Tuesday at 11:00 o'clock, that's really a big hit, way back, you know, I remember that, like yesterday, that, that, and their data says, well, for some reason, well, people go to work and this and that, doing times, people lose. That, that was when they had a major break, right? That, that changed, but, but actually, they have that data, because that's how they do it. But now they're saying, is it gonna map it? And, and I'm saying, how are you gonna, to, to target an area when everybody knows it? I mean, criminal goes and says, "Oh, all the boys are gonna be in that area, because look all the dots, I'm gonna go over here."
Well, it shows down here, here's the DUI. Here, here's vandalism. A vandalism. You know, I guess it's every category.
Okay, let's, who brings the chief in, and then we'll move forward.
It is, uh, real quick items. We did establish a hotline for potholes, 248-796-4000. We're getting a fairly decent volume of calls. The line is working. We're still getting information from our website, seven, uh, seven nine six hundred I's, or seven nine six I's, we're, we're getting calls from there as well. We have had as many as six crews out working on potholes. Two dump trucks filled in their neighborhoods, four crews hot patching. Public Works, when the pothole challenge came up, they really came up with some creative ways and things that I've been, I've told, we've never had as many as six crews out. Saturday, 12-hour shift, eight hours on Sunday. We had four crews out, and, so we're really, you know, doing our best to tackle this problem. Public Information has established a road construction link on our, on the city's website, letting people, part of our public education campaign for Evergreen Road, both Nine Mile, Ten Two, Eleven Mile, and then Greenfield. We've got the future on that will be this summer, Eleven Mile, front of the old Blue Cross Blue Shield building, as well as Nine Mile Beach to Tallahassee. Final item is, we have the Southfield Home and Garden Show is scheduled in the pavilion for Saturday, May 17th.
I agree with you.
From 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That is on our website. Public Information is coordinating that. We have a team from Public Information, Business Development, Parks and Rec, putting that together.
Can we do it on what's happening the weekend on TV?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. In fact, we've already reached out to several media with, uh, everyone tried to wear Glenn Haig Show, WGR. They were in discussion, they wanted to do a live broadcast, and we were this close. Unfortunately, at the last minute, Mr. Haig had a conflict arise, but they are gonna have me in the studio the Saturday prior to, to have us-
And this is with the mayor's Flower Day, too, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we're parlaying from traditional Flower Day, so we have a milton following with that event. It would actually be the 13th annual this year.
And tell them you'll go from a flower show in front-
Right.
-to as you go to the pavilion.
Absolutely.
The landscape army, the home.
Right, right. The concept is to have, as Mrs. Zorn just said, on the front lawn, it would be the traditional Southfield Flower Day event, coupled with more landscape and garden vendors, such as ponds and waterfalls, brick towers, this type of thing. And then the pavilion will have the home improvement vendors, and hopefully, everything from, you know, fencing, roofs, windows, so on. I can tell you, we've got some big names signing up already. It's got Magic Windows on board, Wallside Windows, that leaves another one. I think I'm about done with Windows. Again, we, we, we put in our materials that we, we reserve the right to, based on our needs to, you know, as far as the push, 'cause we do wanna have a very diverse group. I wanna have as many different disciplines represented as possible. So, but they're starting to come in, Sam's Club, some other big names doing other things like that, but we hope to have a very successful event. It will be free admission, so a lot of the other shows do charge admission, we'll have free partner admission, that'll hopefully bring out the crowd, even food trucks, food vendors, different types of things. And almost home animal, almost home animal adoption, has agreed to do onsite pet adoption as well.
Oh, good.
There'll be an Ask the Inspector station.
We should have one from the Building Department, so if you-
That'll be the Ask the Inspector station.
Even, even crime prevention and fire safety, I mean, we have planned to have all relevant departments on board.
Just make sure you have, no dander lying. I, Lord have mercy, can we please get the word on how not to have dander lying springs?
Mayor, we, we do have an article on the Top of Living, the Kiddy Mailbox, as we speak, well, not right now, but that came out this week. And we do have a lawnmower article in there.
I'm glad the gentleman mentioned the animal opportunity, and while I haven't gone through the proper channels, I'm talking about a resident, a former resident who's given me power attorney to speak on his behalf. He's been missing, although Sergeant White has done his best. Little Ricky has gone from 24185 Garner, and he's hoping that ten pair of eyes beyond that of Sergeant White, who's been working in Almost Home, as well as the different humane societies, might find man's best friend, albeit Lansing and their determination of our future relationship, he and I, that we re, that reabsolved that man is but dog. It's man's best, his master's voice, all of those things combined, Little Ricky. So if you see him in the highways, one of these-
He's got a chip.
Yes, he's got a chip, a Southfield always up to date.
He has the collar, in the picture.
Yes, yes, and like we're talking about Florida, they're more afraid of mapping the sinkholes, to tell you the truth, but I was, I disappeared from my yard with a lot of traffic that goes through there now, and we won't know until we play back. Yes, thank you very much.
I, I just wanna let the council know that we have two, two public workshops coming up. We have two public workshops coming up. The Planning Commission is gonna be holding a workshop at McDonald Powers to talk about senior services and active living issues. It'll be Wednesday, December 16th. It's a study session of the Planning Commission. Also, as a suggestion by council, we're having a second open house on April 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in Parks and Rec, room 221, to talk about Evergreen Road construction, as well as city center plans. We've invited all of the residents, homeowner association neighborhoods in the district and immediately adjacent to the district, as well as an email will go out to the business community. So we had one in the fall, this will be a second one. Cable will be there filming it and then rebroadcasting it. So those are two events that will happen prior to us meeting again. I just wanted to let the council know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just so that you know, we're doing a visit to the Medical Main Street in Grand Rapids, the DDA, and we're very excited about the mayor and the, um, some city council members there, we're gonna take them on a tour, 'cause you know, in the DDA, they're really working on that Medical Main Street, so we're excited about that opportunity.
That just, if we've got an issue with the open, do we have an issue with the open meeting?
The AL's attorney will have to contact you.
Well, I think here, AL's, AL's attorney's opinion's different than the city attorney's. But if more than three council people are going, we may have to post the meeting.
We've done it before. If, if the fact that none support, freedom participates.
The county, I, I, yeah.
Do we, do we know?
If their attorney says, they don't think it's subject to the open meeting act.
Because we're not voting on anything.
Right.
Well, it's, it's the decision, it's the kind of decision-
Right, as you're driving around, and are you making-
It's leading to any kind of decision.
All you're doing is observing, you're not making decisions, you're not discussing policy. It's just like when some of you went down to visit that spot in Florida that you wanted to see what that looked like when you were considering the city center. It's, it's for you to go and look at it and see what, and they're making a presentation to, it's really for the board, it's for the DDA, but they, they know that the, the city council should be included in that vision, so that we can see the opportunity.
So just to avoid the appearance of, kind of conducting a closed meeting, can we just post it, and we're done, too? We, we've done that before. I mean, the issue is, and I don't really have a sense of what this thing is about, 'cause I'm just kinda hearing about it, but-
I, I totally, we're not making, it's a tour.
Right, it's just a tour. And, and as long as there's no discussions deliberating towards something, I agree with that analysis. I agree with it.
Because it's really, it, it's the DDA, or the DDA, whatever, trying to make that point of including council, because at the end of the day, if they come, if I'm talking about Medical Main Street, you all gonna say, "What is that? We don't know what you're talking about." And so it's them, but they should listen, like, they're comfortable, so that you all be on board.
Where would they put it?
Where would they put it?
Well, they, I mean, you have the property to, to bring-
John, that's why we're going, they're gonna tell us how they've acknowledged it. How did they, pardon, was it, you know, we don't, they're not trying to put it anywhere. They already have Greenfield Road that already, and Nine Mile Road that has all this medical development. How did they create that synergy? What did they do? And it's just to use that as, I'm sorry, use this word a bit, but, we can look at and say, "How does that happen?" You know how you visit places and you get ideas?
It's, 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 uh, May 12th, the bus leaves at 6:45 a.m. May 7th.
People in hospital, they bought a, a section of that older neighborhood that's around the hospital, and made it, I mean, like a medical incubator. And, but, you know, the hospital got behind it, and, and, and of course, they, there are doctors and whoever, they, 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 "Welcome, they don't be here, Providence Park." You know, they bring all the doctors over there and this and that. They built the big office building over there. That's the same thing, only it's up and, and in, but Providence did that right here in nobody. They, they just built a tower until everybody moved in, and it took them from here. You know, I mean, that's how you have to get them, is, is by having the, the hospital be part of the partnership, and they tell their doctors and, and, you know, just like you have 25 of them in, in, in IBM building, all right? And they're associated with Providence. But actually, they have it, only it's in a tower. People, they got it in a park, like a medical park.
And then Jackson, they have the medical mall.
Yeah, but whatever, that's what I'm saying, but it's, it's, no matter how, how you try to do it, if you can't bring the medical people to, to say to their doctors and, and people with-
Well, the doctors just bought that whole, I mean, they just have that whole building. That's an entirely renovated building on Nine Mile, and all, all submission, and they upgraded that building.
You're talking about the IBM building?
No, that's why Providence had to move over to the IBM building, 'cause those doctors bought that whole building. And I just, I, you know, I had to use my-
I just think you have to have a definition of what we're talking about.
And that's why we need to, you need a vision, I think, a vision.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds to me like the DDA is trying to figure out, how do you continue the growth of the, of the medical area in, in their area? So they're gonna go someplace where that's already successful, to say, you know, pick their brains, and say, "What, how did you do, how did you go from nothing to something?" And, yeah, that's, that's how you learn, so.
And it is Wednesday, May 7th, we'll be leaving the DDA parking lot at 6:45 a.m., and they'll return at 6:30 p.m. If you're interested in going, you should let Jackie know as soon as possible, they're trying to get a head count.
And it's gonna be at their building, is that?
At their building.
They're gonna take the, the, uh-
That would be the one.
It's a Wednesday.